Hello, everyone. I'm calling to order the meet, a special meeting of the Pinole City Council. It is Saturday, January 30th, 2021. Welcome and thank you for joining us this morning. It is a special city council meeting, a workshop, and we will hear more about that shortly. At this point, I'd like to have the pledge of allegiance and if you would, please join me.
Allegiance, flag, United States of America. It's the Brooklyn Bridge. For which one nation undergone that individual liberty, justice.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, may we please have a call?
Yes, thank you. Mayor Martinez-Rubin.
Here.
Mayor Protem Salimi.
Here.
Councilmember Tave.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
Councilmember Toms.
Here.
City Manager Murray.
Here.
City Attorney Kasher.
Here.
Assistant City Manager De La Rosa.
Here.
Mayor and Council, the agenda and packet was posted on Thursday, January 28th at 4:00 P. M. with all legally required notices. Are there any conflicts to report? That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Now we will go to public comments. Are there any public comments? And let me inform the public a bit. This is slightly different because it's a special council meeting. All public comments received by the city clerk, including those related to workshop items 4A and 4B, on our agenda today will be read aloud during this item and are limited to three minutes. Any public comments received after the close of this item will be held with the official meeting record. Madam City Clerk, any public comments?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have two comments. The first one is from Cordell Hindler and he wrote, "This relates to item 4B. I have a couple of comments relating to 4B. I have looked at the strategic plan and I was impressed with the report. Sincerely, Cordell." The second comment is from Irma Rupert and she wrote, "Good morning, Mayor, Council, staff and public. I would like to make a couple of comments regarding this workshop. First of all, it was posted a little too late to be able to make sense and read completely. However, I do want you to know my biggest concern with the city that we have not paid enough time with our communication with the residents. We have two TV channels, 26 and 28, that have been underutilized to its potential. We need to invest in this communication. I did not see this as a priority in our city list, however it should be. I would strongly recommend that we put our cable person in charge, Dave Snell, our expert and experienced person who knows a lot more than the rest of us on how to improve this area. I am tired of watching reruns of 2008 programs that are not useful and informative to our community. Bring ideas from public safety personnel and others who can improve our communication to the public, especially in these times of hardships. We, as the taxpayer, are paying for this and money, time is being wasted. Let's put Dave in charge and have him bring some idea solutions to our situation. Please do not hire a consultant. We do not need one. I think we can do this on our own." Next comment, "I was able to read some agenda items. My only complaint that we do not, do not put an ad hoc committee and waste almost six, seven months on one project and lose time and money. Lastly, think of the community you are serving and not personal gain. All of you ran under the premise that community was our number one, your number one priority. We are in a crisis and we do not need unnecessary issues and projects to get in the way of protecting and saving our city. Let's all try to do better this year and make it a team effort. Thanks, Irma Rupert, resident of over 40 years, former Public Safety and Economic and Development and Affordable Housing Member." And let me just do one more check of our comment inbox. It looks like that concludes the public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. So I will close the public comment period and we will go on to the next item on our agenda. So today's workshop items are two. One of them is that this city council will have a bit of team building and review and possibly update the council norms of behavior. And the other item is to review and provide direction on scheduling of strategic plan 2020, 2025 strategies and pending future council agenda items. So I'd like to say a little bit about why we came together. You know, in December, we reorganized this council. We have a newly composed council with two members who were elected in November of 2020. And that, under different circumstances, for different reasons, and yes, certainly keeping the community in mind, we all ran in the interest of representing it. And we were brought together. Now is an opportunity to come together, as we have chosen to do so, and try to identify areas where we can work together. So there's a different series of steps that we are taking in order to work together as a team. Indeed, not only as council members, but as well with our staff. So the workshop purposes or the workshop purpose for today is to build relationships among council members, to review the practice of effective councils and to review possibly updating council norms, which were put together in August of 2019. At that time, there was a different composition to our council. And lastly, to provide direction to staff. Now, there will be ample opportunity for community input and further discussion among council members following this workshop. And that will take us through the items that we will contemplate today, we will consider today, and the direction that we are going to be providing to staff will be with regard to items to be scheduled for fiscal year, through the end of this fiscal year, which would be fiscal year 2020, 2021. So thank you for that. Look forward to this engagement with my fellow council members. And I will turn it over to our partners for this workshop, management partners to take us through item 4A, which is the city council team building and review and possible update of council norms of behavior. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask my associate, Ashley Garcia, to pull up our PowerPoint. My name is Christine Butterfield. I'm with Management Partners and my associate, Ashley Garcia, is also with Management Partners. I'm so pleased to be with you again. I had the pleasure of being part of that June 2019 workshop and it really was a foundational discussion with the council on effective practices of elected bodies. The group did establish norms, but it provided really baseline information in anticipation of a strategic planning process that engaged the entire community in, you know, what's the vision for Pinole? And, you know, where does the council, we included staff and community members, really see this community headed in the next five to seven years? So we're so pleased to be with you here again today. I'm going to jump ahead a couple of slides. The mayor took care of some of these housekeeping matters, Ashley, the welcome, the public comment. The objectives today, I'm just going to recap. The mayor reviewed the agenda, but again, we're going to talk a little bit about the practices of effective councils, take a look at Pinole's norms and then discuss governance roles. And this is all part of really best practices, we called governance hygiene. Or if you were on your own, you would have, you'd check in with your doctor on an annual basis. You don't go because there's a problem, but you go just to check in, confirm all as well and talk about some of your personal goals and priorities. So that's what we're doing here today. Management Partners will lead the first portion of that discussion. We'll take a break and then turn it over to the city manager to proceed with a discussion of the accomplishments, highlighting the city's work plan and really talk in greater detail about special projects and the disposition intake process for council requests. And we plan to wrap up by about 2:00 P. M. today, so we will move quickly. And again, we do really appreciate you all investing the time on a Saturday. You're already working so hard and so much in the midst of this pandemic. Everything has had to change and we appreciate your interest in participating and as well as being adaptive through the course of the day with technology. So we want to thank you for that in advance. Now we jump to the next slide. So our ground rules, we find, just as the council has norms, that when we facilitate these discussions, it's good to have a set of ground rules. We just invite you to listen with a high degree of curiosity, ask questions. We're going to work towards consensus, assume one another's good intent. If we get distracted from the agenda, which happens, and that's completely fine, let us know and we'll ensure that we correct our course and that'll allow us to stay focused. And I'm going to show you next, the vehicle we're going to use to stay on track. So we use something called a bike rack. Some people call it a parking lot. But at the point, various points in the discussion where potentially the council identifies topics that are not on the agenda, we'll include those in the bike rack. Ashley is going to be, Ashley and I are going to be tag teaming, taking notes. And the summary of those bike rack issues along with the council's discussion and the agenda today will be included in a report that Management Partners will prepare and provide to the city within about two weeks. So with that, I'm going to invite all of the council members to turn on their video. And I will just randomly call, if you're comfortable with that, each of you to respond to this question. But the question is, what headline do you most hope to read about Pinole in the next several years? And as you're thinking about your response to this, Ashley is going to pull off the PowerPoint and we're going to do a traditional facilitated discussion where I can see your faces and your responses. And then Ashley will share, right before we move on to the next topic, a summary of what you all have shared. So if you're comfortable with my random selection of you all, I'd like to start with Councilmember Salimi.
Good morning.
Hi, good morning. Nice to see you again.
Pleasure. Thank you for being here this morning. It's a pleasure to have you. I think first of all, we would like to be outside of that pandemic and we would like the entire community to be safe from a health perspective. And second of all, from an economic perspective, I would like the city to be able to improve its revenues so that we get to provide the services that the city needs. And for this, we can either, I believe we can talk about how we can actually improve the revenues of the city. And finally, it is also a social aspect that we can also improve for the city of Pinole.
Tell me more, can you expand? Is there an example, the social aspect?
I think Councilmember Murphy can expand on that specific subject. When I, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you for those three thoughts. That's wonderful. Councilmember Tave?
So my headline would be something that affects Pinole's stuffs to thriving, sustainable community. And what I mean by that is sustainable, meaning that we're at a point where we have, and to somewhat what Councilmember Salimi was mentioning, we have revenues to keep our city going. So every road is paved. I mean, this is ideal, right? But we have energy usage. If we were at, at some point, you know, a net zero community where we generated enough energy that matched our usage, that we are at the cutting edge of technology usage, that the city has all the resources to, for city staff to perform their job accurately. For me, infrastructure is a big thing. I want to see sustainable infrastructure. Recycle, recycled water is one of the big things that I've been trying to push. The waste management and the way we handle our trash is another big issue that I have. And then I'm working on emergency planning to make sure that our city is safe. Those are the things that create a great environment for people to live in. I want us to be a model city. Something that can be scaled up to a larger city where everyone's contributing and everyone is involved and their perspective is heard. Regardless of how, you know, far out somebody may think their perspective is, it's valuable and it's something that needs to be brought to the table. Or however quiet that, you know, a small gem that's sitting in the middle of the valley, that idea that, I want to create a forum in an environment where people are comfortable to bring those ideas to the table.
Great. And I think I hear a passionate voter in the background. A future sustainability advocate, is that right?
I got to tell everyone, if you hear kids screaming, they're okay. That's just normal. And it's my new normal and I'm just going with it.
That's awesome. That is awesome.
They're just very passionate about politics. That's what's usually.
Absolutely. And they should be. Councilmember Tave, just to clarify, you talked about waste management. Is that your interest related to like recycling, upcycling? Was that the interest?
Well, that's part of it. There's a lot going on regionally that we belong to, the city of Pinole belongs to. So I'm a novice at it, so I'm open to all ideas coming from the council. I know that Councilmember Murphy and Councilmember Salimi, I have voiced, you know, how we manage our trash and recycle and the environment component. So I'm interested in working with them on how to develop this into something that's a model for the rest of the Bay Area.
Wonderful. Thank you for the clarification. Great. Councilmember Murphy?
Hi, good morning, Christine. How are you?
Good morning. Nice to meet you and see you.
Nice to see you again. Your question?
So what headline do you hope to read about Pinole in the next several years?
Oh, yeah. So along the lines, I think, you know, if I had a headline, it'd be something like, "The city of Pinole, you know, launches, you know, or, you know, recovers from COVID-19 pandemic while launching, you know, and transforming its own economy into a green economy that fights the climate crisis." It's kind of, again, along the lines of the council members who spoke before. I think it's folk, our huge focus right now is not only recovering from the pandemic we're in, but, you know, as climate change impacts us all, you know, local governments like Pinole, especially Pinole, have an ability to, you know, really take bold action to lead to zero waste. And, you know, it's kind of the harmful mission. So, you know, its buildings are energy efficient, our transportation, you know, and our electric grid is important. I heard things around waste management that are of course important as well. So really adopting this agenda to, and showing what, you know, a small city named David can really take on a big issue of the climate crisis called Goliath.
Absolutely. Powerful. Thank you. Councilmember Toms?
Sure. I'm going to take a little bit more specific approach and that would be the headline of "New development, businesses at new development in downtown open." And then along the, you know, the story would include how, you know, we need more restaurants because there's such a huge wait. Because, you know, everything's busy. You know, parking lots are full, including the parking lots with EV chargers and that we are getting people from out of town visiting Pinole. And oh, by the way, that new development is LEED certified. And that there's a lot of pedestrian activity because we have safe pedestrian, you know, access around our downtown.
Great. Great. Thank you. Mayor?
The headline reads, "Pinole Remains Fiscally Solvent" and makes a list of the healthy places to live. So underneath that are all kinds of variations of what healthy means. Certainly there had been mention of a healthy environment. There's also with regard to maintaining fiscal solvency is the consideration of what it entails to meet the interest of our constituents while at the same time recognizing that we've got some long-term obligations that we have debts on and that some of them are not funded yet. And that we also have to do something today so that we don't make the headline of "City of Pinole joins formerly bankrupt cities." So I'm going to keep that in mind and, you know, thinking that the discussion that will lead to a headline or the many discussions that will lead to a headline will include our regard for also possibly having to engage our constituents in the matter of helping us bring in additional revenue for the services that they desire, knowing that we have to continually balance what is wanted with what is needed and what is by a statute required of us. So that gets into the legal matters as well.
Great. Thank you very much. So I'm going to ask Ashley now to share the summary of the comments, if we can pull up that screen.
Just one moment. I'll get there.
Okay. Okay, great. Why don't you go ahead and review those, Ashley?
Okay. So some of the headlines that the council members most hope to read about Pinole in the next several years include, "Outside of the pandemic, Pinole remains healthy and safe and improves revenues to provide services." "Pinole has established a thriving, sustainable community and is a model city." And some of those details under the headline include net zero community, cutting-edge technology, adequate resources, infrastructure, waste management, emergency planning and valued perspectives. The next one, "Recovers from COVID while launching a green economy," sorry, "to fight the climate crisis." "Business at new development in downtown open, including restaurants, full parking lots and safety for pedestrians." And finally, "Pinole remains fiscally solvent, makes list of healthy places to live by balancing wants and needs."
Great. Thank you. So as the council looks at that list, is there anything missing?
I think there's going to be a few things missing as the day goes by. We will identify those items.
Okay. Anybody else have anything that they would like to add? I see Councilmember Tave's finger going up. Did you want to?
I just wanted to ask if there was a contrast between the last time we did this exercise?
So I think in 2019, we were really asking a question about what are your long-term goals? We didn't ask this question, which is a little bit shorter term. But I would be happy to, when we prepared the summary report, include the 2019 report, if you like, so you can see the transformation. And that's a really good point.
Well, because I do think that we are more focused here on this line. You know what I mean? Like this is definitely a short-term goals that are accomplished, you know, that I think over the next year are really something we could highlight. So I just wanted to see that broad, that broad stroke that we took last time and then, and then how that's dialed in on this council.
I will just offer the observation that the discussion about green infrastructure, sustainability, you know, net zero carbon footprint, I mean, those are things that I didn't hear as much at the previous discussion. It doesn't mean that it wasn't an interest, but the time horizon we offered was longer and you hadn't engaged the community in a strategic plan yet. So that's just additional information.
Thank you.
Yes.
Go ahead, Devin.
I was just going to mention, what I did see was missing is, you know, I think our changing demographics in our town really are a huge opportunity for us moving forward in the next decade. And so I think like kind of, you know, burying the lead, of course, it's one of those clickbait things. I think what's missing there is really how that changing demographics of multiracial families is going to drive a lot of that, a lot of the work and kind of ideology we're presenting there, so.
So I'm guessing, I'm guessing the headline is, "Pinole delivers on inclusive participation for policy design, community input, but the whole concept of inclusivity so that the work, the governance work that the council is doing is reflected based upon the population's interests." Is that?
Yeah, I think that's right.
Great. Any other?
Yeah, just to offer a comment to Councilmember Tave's question, which is, I was not here for the workshop back in 2019, but there are, we do have some documentation. One thing that I wanted to note is the, some of these themes really are consistent with the four goals that were identified in the strategic plan. And those four goals are safe and resilient Pinole, financially stable Pinole, vibrant and beautiful Pinole and high-performance Pinole. So I do think that the comments that you just made through the exercise we just participated in are still pretty consistent. As you say, maybe they're more focused now, but they are consistent with the four goals you identified. And those are, you know, in my mind, continue to be really appropriate and high areas of focus. One observation I'll make and it's consistent with what Christine mentioned is, just in my short period of time here, I've heard more expression from the council about sustainability and environmental issues that I think was, had been on the minds of the council when the strategic plan was created. So I just wanted to offer those observations.
Mayor or Councilmember Toms, any other additions to the list?
No, I think it's captured really well.
Great. Great. And I know that there is an interest of council members to talk about the connections between, you know, the staff's work plan and the strategic priorities, strategic goals, and then the council referrals and how all those things interrelate as well. And we can talk about those later on. Mayor, any other additions? Okay. Great. Well, we're going to jump in to the discussion of the team, team building, teamwork. So clearly, this is a refresher. The council looked at some previous articles by the Institute for Local Government and we did attach, the city manager did attach a couple of articles to the packet for today's special city council meeting. So this will be a refresher, but I think the most important point is that when elected officials are running for office, it's an individual sport. They're following a passion and they're driving it through a vocation. And most of you are probably working in those realms as well as running for office to further these passions and interests of community members. When we get into the discussion of effective practices of elected officials, we're really taking off the elected official hat or the politician hat and we're putting on a governing hat. And that transition allows us to move from an individual sport to really a team sport. So we're going to talk about some of the best practices associated with teams and councils. Ashley, should we jump? Great. So this will be review. I mean, all of you ascended to these positions because you work effectively with teams, but they're worth re- Um, I mean, all of you ascended to these positions because you work effectively um with teams, but um they're worth reviewing. Uh, getting things done for the community as a team makes everyone look good. And um we know that um successes build on one another. And um the success of a team really is dependent on the, the strength of the um the strength and health of the relationship. I would offer too that um, and I, and I'm sure you all know this, that there may be a team, a council that's operating together for a period of time. And even if there only one new member le- leaves, or even only if one member leaves and one new member joins, that team dynamic starts over again, goes back to zero, and needs to rebuild the culture and update the norms and for effective practices. But it, but it's worth, um, it's worth acknowledging that, so. The attributes, and this is directly from the articles um that you read, um, the attributes of high-performing councils and high-performing teams are the commitment to collaborate and partner and work together. Identifying, clarifying roles and responsibilities, and then abiding by those roles, demonstrating civility and respect. I've not seen that as an issue at all for, for this group. Conducting effective meetings, um, which I know that you do. Um, you've been using the norms um and um generally conducting very effective meetings with transparency to make it easy for members of the community to understand um how they engage and when they can engage in those discussions, holding one another accountable. You know, um, if you say you're gonna do something, then you do something. Um, and that builds trust of the team and as well team confidence. And um the issue around continuous learning and remaining curious, we all know that um we learn from failures or miss slash misses as well as successes. And if um teams that spend time learning rather than blaming or rather than getting tied up in um the, the failure or avoiding to stop when there's success and say, hey, what about this? Um, project was successful and how can we carry forward the lessons learned? Um, that's really, that's really a powerful, that's really a powerful practice. So just offer that as, offer that as review. Now, moving on to um to governing, um, again, this is a new team. You got a couple new members. Um, you're gonna be doing the storming and the norming, uh, but the relationship building is key. And I know that in the work that Management Partners did for um the uh development of the strategic plan and the facilitation and convening the groups, that the Pinal City Council does not see relationships or public engagement as transactional. And that is so critical to any uh government's success. Um, what we heard over and over again was that this was really about relationship building. Um, you know, working with the community to identify priorities and then demonstrating results. So um good governance is about that relationship building piece. And we, we know that um the City of Pinal City Council, you believe in that ethic. But just to review, um, it's dependent on effective leadership of the mayor and the council, responsive management, that there's really meaningful communication here in addition to being honest, clear, respectful. The proactive component is, is really about avoiding surprising um groups. Certainly, there's enough surprises that happen in just the administration of government. There, a waterline can break. You can have a pandemic. Um, you can have a, a catastrophic event. But for the work plan, the policy questions, the administrative work, where there's, you, you have control, acting um with the end in mind and working proactively takes off a lot of the pressure. And it also provides for um higher quality policy discussions. We talked about roles, foster respect and ethics. So as it relates to communication, um, I, personally, I really like, and I recommend this to um staff teams and then elected bodies. And many of you, I, I'm sure um have run across um this book through the course of um your governance work or professional or personal work. The book Getting TS, really um working with your team um around interests. Um, it's very difficult to have a productive discussion when, when people are sitting, sitting in positions and looking for options to gain um for mutual gain. And one piece um that I believe many um governing bodies don't take the time to think, think through because it does take more time upfront, but provides for ease in policy decision-making, is being really clear when a problem isn't, is identified or a challenge is identified, what are the criteria that the council will use in order to make their decision? And knowing that information early on also helps staff to frame the policy options, alternatives, and assess the benefits, the strengths and weaknesses, um, attributes or concerns related to those policy options. And of course, focus on, focus on the outcomes. And um we, we know that, we know that you do that um because we just did it in the headline exercise. Um, and you have the strategic plan. So with that, let's jump into our um our, our next slide, disagree, disagreeing agreeably. Um, I think you all understand this. And, and in fact, you have to do it um when you govern. You have to assume people don't agree. But the question is, how do you engage in a productive discussion? And what are the principles you abide by to move the council, neighborhoods, um, communities, regional entities through that discussion? So let's jump into um, I'd really like to hear from each of you. What stood out to you in the ILG articles? And I know for a couple of you, you've seen those articles in the past, and you may have participated in recent training through the Institute of Local Government. And what stood, stood out to you from this discussion? So why don't we start? Um, I'll go the other direction. Why don't we start with Mayor?
Thank you. A couple of things stood out. Um, and I'm not sure that I, I saw the word in the, in the PowerPoint presentation, but that's the matter of values. You know, what is it that we value as individual members of a council, of a team? So that um together, uh with or in spite of our values, that we still get to discussion of um overall goals. And um this matter of interest, not position, really um sounded familiar to me with the recent example that um council deliberated on uh a lot last year and which, which was um which received a lot of public input. And um I was struck by, you know, we really haven't had the conversation of what is underlying the request for this interest, or what is underlying why we want to focus on this interest? Um, so those, I know I'm speaking in general, um, without specific example, but, but that um is something that I will be working on and trying to listen to my council members here. You know, what is it that, that's being said that represents an interest that, and, and, and what is underlying that? Um, is it comparable to what we all hold as something that we hear merits attention because it is representative of a value that we uphold? Whether that be inclusiveness, whether that be um the um availability of a variety of services that a uh local government can support? So that's what, that's what I was left with.
Thank you, thank you. Councilmember Toms?
Sure, I'll talk about two, two things that really stuck out to me. And one was um speak to, speak to the issue, not the person. I don't know if I have that
Yes.
phrased correctly, but um I think that that's um really important, that a lot of people will, you know, take a look at who supports the issue and therefore I'm gonna either support the issue because of who supports it or not. But you really have to look at the issue itself. And then the other piece is something that, that we as a s- society have to um, have had to really deal with in 2020. And that is continuous personal learning and development. I think that we really need to be aware of, of that um in every aspect of our community.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Murphy?
Sure. Um, two things that stuck out to me were, well, a few things. Number one, I think number, I think it's number five, which was around um holding, you know, ourselves accountable and the city accountable. I think oftentimes accountability as a, as a term could be, some folks see it as a negative connotation. So I guess questions that stuck out to me was what does accountability look like um in, in this arena? But also um how do we celebrate success with accountability, right? I mean, that accountability doesn't just mean bad. So um, it certainly stuck out to me. I think um, you know, I, I think overall it wasn't a particular uh number, but overall it seemed like team building was a huge piece of the, the document you sent over. Um, and I think that oftentimes team building is very much um a question of how to deal with conflict and um how folks are um how the minority sometimes may kind of need to wilt it and assimilate to the majority. So my question kind of um around the team building or what stuck out to me was like, how do we create teams, but how do we center those teams on um, on uh differences instead of the same thing, if that makes sense? Um, you know, how do we acknowledge that difference is an opportunity? Um, instead of thinking about how we're all the same too, if that makes sense?
Mm-hmm, okay, great. Thanks. Let's see. A Councilmember Tave?
Yeah, um, you know, I, I'm looking at this and, you know, I highlighted some areas that, you know, that to me se- seem to be, you know, like focusing on the needs of the community, right? And, and a lot of times it's hard because what somebody may have an interest in may not be the best, like, cuz it's about timing, right? Like, and, and there's, and there's, there's items where to me, to me, as a council, we, we have to make sure that we're putting that not just today, today's needs and past needs, right? Cuz I feel like you get elected on the needs that are current, right? Or that, that people want to have. And you get elected and you're here and you have the needs that are presented for the day. And then you're trying to have this forward planning to sit, make sure that you're meeting the needs that you see coming down the line. Um, and as a body, a lot of that is different. And that was kind of why this prioritization session or I kept pushing like, hey, you know, we, we need to prioritize and then make rest of the council. Is it, we all have to kind of understand where everyone's sitting, what everyone's uh looking at and, and how we're going to talk about these issues. Um, you know, trust and openness. Uh, we have to be able to say the hard things, uh, vote the hard way, if, if whatever that is for, for the rest of the body. Um, and, and you know, really just take into consideration, I mean, to me, the consideration of the community, staff's perspective and, and what our overall plans are. And, and those are the hard decisions. I mean, those are not the easy ones. Um, and, and to somewhat, and ha- have that in the back of your mind is that, you know, that everyone's making the best decision that they can with the information that they're presenting. And, and I think that, that's one of those things that I look at as, as a good team. A good team knows that none of these decisions are easy. Whenever we get an easy one, it's a, it's a vote for, you know, it's an easy vote, right? So I think for me, it's, it's when it's hard, that's when, you know, we have to allow each other the time and space to have a full discussion and, and justify that reason. Um, I feel like we have the two minutes on Zoom to, to, to explain our, our position. And then we're, we're motion second and we're now voting, right? Um, where a lot of things sometimes need more deci- more discussion and a deeper dive into the details. Um, so tha- that's just what, what I see from this. Um, the things that I highlighted were um you know, for us to make time for the conversations, uh, you know, the studies, the retreats, these are helpful to everyone, in my opinion. Like, just to make sure that we're avoiding misunderstandings that are in the, that are in the article, like that the, you know, as far as the best practices. So for me, I, I think just those things that openness, trust, the ability to make a decision and move on from it. Um, those are those, those things where we can, we can try, try to do that. I know that there are some things that, that I wish we didn't do, but, but that's, that's this, that's the council and, and I'm, and I respect that.
You mean things that um po- potentially um the majority of the council votes one way and you vote a different way? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, to me, I, I honestly can say that, that that's the will of the body, then that's the will of the body. Like, I mean, I'm not, I, I, I can't, I can't, you know, go back to those or hold that against anybody, you know, like. But I think that it's, it's hard sometimes because you have the community who may say, God, you know, I really, really wanted this. And it's like, well, well, yeah, I understand, but, but, you know, I, 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 my vote, my vote went one way and the other vote went the other way, you know, like, we can, we can have those discussions. I, I'd like to see those discussions more in these workshops and so that we can talk about it with the community a lot more, but I mean, it's, it's just respecting those votes and, and going, going with what you have, you know? So yeah, I mean, that's what I see here, but I think we do that well. I, I think we did that well for the last two years, and I think we're gonna do it well for the next, you know, 20. Um, I, I, I like the fact that we're setting this tone with, with these, with these workshops and that we have the the ability to have a strategic plan, so we have a document that we can agree to and, and, and kind of drive, drive itself. That's just, I mean, that's what hits me when I, when I think about reading this article.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, great. And um I, that's such an important point that when the council makes a decision based upon the majority of the vote and the council member that may have been in the minority, once the council makes the decision, it's the decision of the council and direction has been provided to staff or, or a regional body and, and you're moving on. Um, I, I would just offer um the anecd- the anecdote that, I mean, and I have one. Um, the policymaking is, is a continuum and it can be a longer process. And elected bodies, and I'm sure you've done it in Pinal, can tee up a policy question three, four times over the course of a number of years. And where a council sits at the beginning of that process may be different at the end of the process because through those iterations, the community has been engaged, the community has been informed. And um the problem may have been clarified through the process. The options or alternatives may have improved. And in that continuum, um, essentially what the governing body has done, has educated, informed and brought along the community to the point that um they're ready to make a decision. So I, I think that those are two really critical points about um being patient and persistent, but also, also the role, the role of governance. And, and I'm glad that you feel good about these, you know, workshops, a time to pause and, and reflect. Um, the other thing that I heard you talk about a little bit too was um, there's a process for decision-making and there's timing. And elected officials are, when they're making decisions, they may be looking at short-term, midterm, long-term, all at the same time. Or the question may relate to one of those three, those three phases. Um, and I think it's a goo- good point to raise for the community to see um really the complexity in some of that decision-making. So thank you for that. Great. Councilmember Salimi?
Thank you. I think um the notion, notion of um partnership is the most important one. Sometimes you can have the best team, but they just don't get along. Sometimes you can have the best team, but they just don't get along and nothing gets accomplished. Some other times you get people who don't have anything exceptional, but they get along so well that end up making better decision than the A team does. So I think partnership is the most important thing. And as councilmember Tom said it earlier, don't look at the issue as the person, but look at the issue itself. And there's no universal truth. The way that somebody can take a look at an approach of a specific issue, what it has to do with where they come from and how they grew up. And I can tell you that two people can have different opinions and both be right on the same subject. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Wonderful. Well, let's just briefly review the input to see if anybody has any additions. Ashley, do you want to throw up the the summary of the comments?
Absolutely. Just one moment. So we heard that some of the items that stood out to council members in the discussion of the ILG articles were to uphold values and focus on interests, not position, speak to the issue, not the person, and continuous personal learning and development, raise the question, what does accountability look like? Celebrate success and acknowledge differences within the team. And the next one, community focus and needs identification, understand each other's perspectives, promote trust and openness, acknowledge that some items require a deeper dive for adequate discussion and to accept the will of the body. And finally, that partnership is the most important thing for team effectiveness. And that was not meant to be bolded. We'll unbold that later.
Any other additions? Anybody feel there's anything missing, any other takeaways? Okay, great. Nice. Pull up the PowerPoint here. So I think the I know this group has fun because I've I've seen you do it. So the bottom line is when you're doing this work, who said, oh, councilmember Murphy said celebrate successes. I, this is the biggest miss and the biggest mistake that, you know, governments make. And that's because there's so much work and there's so much activity and so much to do that they don't pause to celebrate successes. And pausing and celebrating, it's fun, but it also provides milestones, memorable milestones in the process of governing and delivering results to the community. And as we talked earlier about learning and being curious and continuous process improvement, see the humor and spectacular fails or misses, but definitely assess what can be learned and brought forward and shared with others to prevent, you know, issues that can be prevented as well as capture opportunities that are captured. And I know you enjoy working together. That's why it's such a pleasure to participate and for us and Work Products in Penole. So next, we're going to turn the discussion back to council. We've got another question. In one word, and before Ashley pulls the PowerPoint down, I'll let you think about it. How, one word, how do you want the community to view the Penole City Council? One word. I'm gonna let her pull it down and I'll give you a couple of minutes before I, or a minute or two before I start calling on folks. Why don't we start with the mayor?
Honest.
Honest. Great. Councilmember Toms?
I was gonna say responsive.
Responsive. Nice. Councilmember Murphy?
Innovative.
Hmm, nice. Councilmember Tave?
I thought resolute.
Resolute. Can you tell me a little bit more about that?
Or acting with purpose.
Okay, okay, got it.
Acting with determined.
Got it. Nice.
Unwavering, that kind of notion.
Nice. Yes. Councilmember Salimi?
Visionary.
Visionary. Great. So we've got the summary of the the one word. When you're waiting in line at Sprouts or you're at the local coffee shop or stopping at the stopping at the bank, you want people to describe the work of the Penole City Council as honest, responsive, innovative, acting with purpose, resolute, and visionary. Anything else? Great. Well, we are ahead schedule, which is also great, by about 20 minutes. But we're going to jump into the discussion of norms now. And again, the council discussed at their June 2019 norms and established them. And then you approved them in August 2019. So Ashley is going to read through those. And then we're going to talk about if you would like to see any tweaks or just reaffirm what has already been established.
Great. Thank you, Christine. So I'll go ahead and review the established norms right now, as you can see on your screen. The first one is to work for the common good, not for personal interest, communicate through the city manager, work for win-win solutions by striving for consensus and seeking common ground. The council's policy deliberation process will be performed in the following order. Council questions, public questions, council deliberations, motions, and decision made by majority vote. Next one is to praise council and staff decisions in public and offer corrective comments in private. Share information with each other early in the process to avoid surprises. Address one another by role and last name and shake hands once the meeting concludes. And I'll put the caveat in non-COVID times. And finally, to establish a structure where the mayor calls on members.
So why don't we can jump to the next slide. I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let you all think about that. And I think, I I don't think, I know that that material is included in the packet for today's meeting. So you're welcome to page page through your packet or we can, we can pull them back up when we do another round robin. But the the question for you all is, what do these look like, what do these look like in practice? Which are working well? And are there any changes that you would like to see? Give you a couple of. Councilmember Tave, did you want to start?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm looking at this and, you know, over the course of the time here, one of the things like when we say communicate with the city manager, a lot of us, I think, have a meeting with with Andrew every week. But I know that there's things that happen on the day to day where there's meetings that go on. One recently that happened was the the school district had contacted and Andrew put in the city manager's report, but I understand that there was a meeting that that happened. And 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 I guess what, when that happens, to me, it was kind of, I I got a call from from our ward representative. And and it was kind of like the Penole was in favor of of a certain transition that they were making that I didn't know about. And and it was one of those things where I knew, so I guess what I'm saying is, is that those kind of larger meetings, I'm not sure if those should be held in in council forum. To me, it just seems like I I was kind of like, I I didn't even know, I mean, I knew about it, but I I guess people walked away with the, an impression that that it was favorable for the city of Penole. And and that was one of the things where I know there could have been a miscommunication or somebody walked away and interpreted something. And and I just, those kind of things, like communications that happen, it it makes me feel kind of like, well, I I I didn't want to bombard Andrew with with all the questions that I had, you know what I mean? But because I know it was something that was just an operational change, right? So I guess it's the one of those things where it's like, how does that get noticed? Is that something that should come back to council? And I'm talking to everybody as a whole, only because I I want to put it out there so that that we don't have those surprises. And I mean, it's a small thing, but it's not, it's not one of those things I want, you know, a district or or a ward trustee calling me about and saying, hey, are you guys in favor of this? I'm like, I don't know. So I I just wanted to share that when we communicate through the city manager. And then the Brown Act makes it very difficult and and it's more like we have to have these in front of everybody. Like a simple email to everybody was like, hey, guys, did you know I got a contact from such such? This is what happened. Does anybody know anything about it? You can't, you can't do that in the Brown Act. So it's something that would be very simple and has to be brought out in these larger meetings to to get an understanding. But I I guess how does stuff like that? How should it be handled? Or how does everybody feel about how that should be handled? To me, it's kind of like, it it may have been an innocuous, you know, something just conversation, but there were takeaways that people had that were that were on the larger scale. And I just, I I don't know how everybody feels about that. So the other thing was like when we're at council and we're having discussions, I'd like us to summarize the action taken or or if Andrew or somebody could take, take this like, okay, I understand the action to be this. And this is, you know, and and that happens most of the time, but there are things that happen along the way that, you know, between the two weeks of of council, right? And and Andrew's been very good about, hey, this is changing direction or that's changing direction in those Monday meetings. But it's just those those day to day meetings that happen that that kind of get popped in. And and I just felt, I felt surprised, like I have no idea what what a Mandarin school is. I really, I had no idea. And and I'm just saying that to the rest of the body, like if you guys knew what what was going on, how do you want to approach it? Is is that a topic that you'd want to bring forward, you know, or have a presentation or something like what? You know?
So the, so the interest is that when there are upcoming meetings, the ability to forecast and then subsequently communicate whatever communication was exchanged.
Right. I mean, I I guess what I'm saying is that some some agencies, like like especially on the state level, they don't have to abide by the the rules that we have. So they're moving a lot faster than than we are. And and, you know, we're, we're on a two week timeline or so for information. But like I said, Andrew will shoot out like, hey, this is going on or that's going on. So to try to keep everybody informed. But I guess what I'm saying is, is that if somebody's walking away from something with an understanding, how do we capture that? Or how do we say, wait, wait a second, you know, like this is something that needs to come back to council for council to look at and for council to hear. And I don't know if it's something that would or wouldn't in this case, but it's just those kind of, like a norm should be like, well, wait a second, this should come back to the body. Right? This affects the, you know, all of Penole or, you know what I mean? Like, that's just how I'm, I'm feeling about the small issue.
I I hear the, I hear the interest. Yep. I hear the interest.
Christine, can I, just because it's, we've talked about this a little bit, I'm not sure that the the full council is familiar with the issue, but so maybe I'll just add some comments on it. The school district was proposing a change to the citing of a charter school at one of our middle schools. The city doesn't have any jurisdiction over what the school district cites there. But as a professional courtesy between the, you know, the the chief officers of the two different districts, the superintendent reached out to me and the mayor and wanted to give us a heads up that the school district was going to be discussing this item of moving a charter school. So there's a charter school that's co-located our middle school. The school board was going to be discussing moving that charter school somewhere else and putting a new school there. And they were just providing us with a kind of a courtesy heads up. There's no city, you know, there's no official action the city needs to take. The city has no jurisdiction over it. It was really just a a heads up. So, I mean, of course, like any commute, so it's kind of like a regional transit agency deciding that they're going to change the routes, you know? One of the things that you all actually already identified in the strategic plan is the need for an interagency, an intergovernmental affairs function, which we really don't have right now. That is a strategic plan strategy. And that would be a function in which we engage more with other regional bodies to share our perspective. And we've done that a little bit, including on things like the regional housing needs allocation and some other things. But this is, you know, we have not been very organized and that's something we will be working on. We really do need to do it. And that's how, so, you know, this would be like any other decision the school district's making. If they want to go back into session, a live session with COVID and all those other things. It's not really a city issue. And so, you know, the city is not have a normal process through which it would, needs to provide any approval. But the city, if it becomes aware of those things, either staff or the council might want to offer a position on those things, which we could discuss. So if, I do have to say, your your understanding of what was communicated to you from the board member in this particular case is not reflective of my impression of the conversation. It was really just a one-way flow of information that I thought was informative. We don't have any jurisdiction. I don't feel empowered to offer a city opinion on that matter anyways, if we didn't. So I just wanted to clear that. But I do think, I mean, that is a known area where we need to have a more robust function. I think as we go to implement that intergovernmental affairs function, we can talk more about, you know, how the city collectively weighs in on policy matters that are being undertaken by other governmental agencies. Because we've done it in kind of an ad hoc fashion so far, like we've sometimes had letters of support or opposition to government, to state legislation and the like. So that is on our radar and I know that we need to 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 do more in that area.
And and that's what I
Go ahead, councilmember Tave.
That's what I gathered. It's just that I think that when we meet with other other agencies, we should have the the representative of of our city there. For example, if it's the the ward, we we should, you know, we should have, or the school district superintendent calls, we should have our ward representative there at the meeting. Because I think she felt kind of, and I know that's not something that we can control like that. But and and we do need that intergovernment affairs person there. It's just that I think she was under the impression, because it was kind of like a, we told the superintendent who told who told her that, oh, Penole's in favor. And I and I, and she called and said, hey, are you in favor? I said, Adam, oh, no way. I mean, I, but I wasn't aware of it. So I think it was like one of those things where where if we have that rep there, she she or that rep can communicate to all of us individually. And I think that was one of the things that it kind of, for me, I was, I was like, oh, okay, you know, I'll bring it up, I'll ask, we're having our strategic planning and and norms meeting, maybe that's something that we do. Like if there's a county issue that the county supervisor is invited to that meeting and there's a discussion, especially if we're going to be, have our electeds there, then then maybe that rep could be there as well. So I was just throwing it out there.
I don't want to get us too caught up in that, but one other observational note is the standard professional practice is if the, you know, the staff members are going to talk, then they, then it's just them. if the, you know, the staff members are going to talk, then they then it's just them. If board representatives are going to talk, usually have representatives from both sides, so.
I see.
Um, and the solution to a miscommunication in general to something like this is I reconnect with the um the staff member of the other agency and say, I feel like there was a miscommunication regarding our conversation. Let's just be more mindful going forward. And that's how those things resolve, because I talk with, you know, uh
Everybody.
counterparts in other cities all the time. And and that's that's just a a necessary way for us staff to maintain coordination on operational matters. But sometimes you need to circle back and say, I want to make sure that we were clear. So I think that's, sorry, Christine.
Yeah, yeah, I I I think um it's uh I appreciate Councilmember Tave's specific example. And I appreciate the city manager's um clarification of the request. Um, what the group heard was that there's a there's a mid and long term priority to develop um a more robust um regional relationship, public affairs, identity, and potentially um some type of vehicle to deliver information um around those communications, the direction of those agencies, the role of the city. I'm just going to offer for the norms um that there may be though a need to identify some short term um connective link um a- around some of that. And um we'll add it to the list and then uh, you know, as as a follow up item, and we and we can talk about how that ends up um translating into practice, um because I want to make sure that we've we've captured the interest. But thank you for the example and thank you for the clarification. Any other um updates to the norms, Councilmember Tave, before I move on to Councilmember Murphy?
Um, I I think I think the norms are are fine. I I think we practiced most of these and it, you know, if not all. Um, I I I think that that for for me, one of the things that, you you know, and I'm just going to say is that I have, you know, as we're talking at the council meeting, a lot of times that, you know, we have, everyone has a lot to say. Everyone has a a, you know, a perspective and and I and I respect everyone's perspective. I I just feel that 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 we we have the tendency and and myself included to paraphrase, right? To try to capture what other people are saying and 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 re- re-say it to hopefully generate dialogue. Um, and 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 at times I find myself, and I'm just using myself as an example, where I would say, you know, I would I would paraphrase what somebody's saying and I didn't capture all of it, right? And and we have the tendency to paraphrase a lot, i- and myself included, I'm not, I'm not immune to it. Um, to to try to understand. And and I I think a lot of times, sometimes we get away from the fact that the the vote is really what we're there for. Um, and the bottom, like the bottom line is the vote. Um, and and that vote is really your decision, you know, which which way you go or not. And and the need to to paraphrase or to go to go into um, a- and I do it. That's why I'm I'm bringing it up is that 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 tendency to try to summarize uh everyone's perspective in the vote. Um, whereas whereas you could say, hey, this is my individual perspective. This is why why I'm voting this way and then moving forward. I don't know if that's captured in the norms, but to try to, you you know, and obviously we wouldn't say it like that, but but it was, it's just something that I see that we do as a council and and every council does it, every council member elected does it. That that tendency to just, you know, go on for five to six minutes, which which to me, it seems like, wait a minute, we can, we can this is why I'm voting, these are the issues, and then and then vote.
So you're saying that council members are um sharing their rationale prior to the vote? It um is your concern that they're repeating the same rationale over and over again?
Well, not so much, not so much that, it's more, it it's it's the paraphrasing of of what other people are saying or 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 just kind of not, how do I put this like? I I think it's more of of us sa- saying what we're trying to trying to understand each other um and and the perspective. We have the tendency to say more or add more to that person, it is content. I don't know if it if it's or or I don't know, I wouldn't call it spin or anything like that. It's just like, i- it's more of this this back and forth that that really just could be brevity, right? Like, and and I do, I do this too, like to try to understand the issue um and and how I'm reading the report. A a lot of times I'll hear people jump in and say, you know, well, this, and then and then the discussion doesn't, it it moves on. Right? You're not able to have that full debate. Um, part of our, part of our uh standards is the debate portion, right? Like, we're able to debate an issue and go, and there's this back and forth. We don't really do that in our council. It's it's somebody makes a statement, the next person has a statement, and the next person of that has a statement, and it kind of collectively, we're borrowing from each each other's statements when it's just, it should be your statement and then some level of debate. At at least for me, if we, you'd have to be able to have that ability, but then it's timing too. So that puts the mayor in a position where, you know, we don't want to be till two o'clock in the morning debating issues, right? So so it's kind of like I'm, I'm trying to say the way the way we operate. Um, if somebody has an issue or wants to add on, there has to be this way to be able to say, okay, yes, please add. But if you're restating or spinning, then then there just has to be an opportunity to debate that. I I'm not capturing this as well as or articulate it as well as I I I'd like to, but I'm trying to is that that there's this sense of brevity that's needed, but at the same time, the ability to have a full discussion back and forth. I mean, it it's just, it's an observation that I've had and that I that I that I'm guilty of too, like.
So I I guess if I can, um, a- as far as um, it it sounds like what you're saying that there may be circumstances where there are policy questions that require some additional time to consider and explore. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and and then there's the the, you know, the the I'll talk last, I'll just say, I'll talk last uh comment or or or, you know, like, it it's the or it's that kind of where it's like, whoa, wait a second, I I someone says something like, and and it's like, well, wait a minute, I want to, I want to add more to that. Like, or somebody, the last person, for example, will say something and you're like, wait a minute. I I there there's more here, there's more content here. Because I I a lot of times I feel like I'm I'm I like I'll speak first, right? And which I don't mind doing, but towards the end, I'm like, well, wait a minute, there's a lot more for us to discuss. And then you have a motion second, and then there's supposed to be more discussion and deliberation, right? But it doesn't seem like we get to that. It's like a motion second vote, right? So, I mean, I I just want to provide a space for us to have a discussion and allow there's some back and forth. So that paraphrasing element doesn't doesn't, you know, well, that's not what I meant, or, you know, I'd like to add more or, you know. So I I don't know if it's free flowing dialogue, I I don't know what that would be, especially in a in a business meeting or in a council meeting.
So um we we can make a note on on your interest around space for additional discussion. I mean, typically councils establish, you know, study sessions or special meetings to thoroughly explore more complex policy issues.
Well, Christine, I I want to ask, i- am I the only one that feels this way, or I mean, because I don't mind.
We're just starting. No, no, we're just starting the discussion and we're going to make a note of this and we're going to go round robin. We're not going to solve the issues today. What we're going to do is just do intake. Um, so, but I'm glad that you raised it and and don't feel like you're.
Christine, like, I just did it. I just did it, right? I just monologued for, you know, fifteen minutes. Like, I'm I'm trying to like see what else everybody else is thinking, but at the same time, I just, I just did exactly what I was saying that that I was trying to avoid, so.
No, no, I I I think this is, I think it's good, um because people learn, you know, people learn in different ways and they process information differently. Why don't we move on to other um council members? And um, like I said, we'll do intake and then and then we can come back with some thoughts. Uh, Councilmember Murphy?
Sure, actually, I have questions before I um
Yeah.
the considerations. And you'll have to forgive me because I I was not a part of the process around the uh council norms of the last council. So um my questions are more so around the intent and what what some of these actually mean. But the first question I had was around, um, I think it was the kind of same understanding and trying to figure out what communicate through the city manager actually means.
So typically, because um there is a line, and we're going to talk about roles next real briefly. There's um a an established line between policy and administration that the chief executive officer is the city manager. And typically, council communications go through the city manager. And certainly, if um, you know, you're working on a specific issue and you're engaging a department director, then you would just copy the city manager. And the purpose for that is so that the city manager is aware of those communications um and ensuring that um, you know, the priorities are established. But, you know, I mean, the city manager is going to identify if there are trends and potentially tee up, is there a need to do reprioritization? Or or are are we seeing some administrative activity that's really a policy work? Or um are are we seeing policymakers kind of delve into administrative work, which doesn't make as much sense? Um, so that's what that means.
Okay, and I would have the same question around praising council and staff decisions in public and then offering corrective comments in private.
So that's that's a best practice. I mean, it's a best practice in, you know, personnel management. And it's a best practice with teams. And that is that um, when there are issues or concerns related to and, you know, a verbal exchange or a tone or the process for um council deliberation, that those happen in private and one on one so that there can be a clear, open, honest, candid discussion. Sometimes it helps to have a facilitator or a note taker so that you so that the individuals or the group can really identify what's the problem in order to come up with solutions. Um, certainly, um councils um that argue and behave with a lack of civility um in the public view, it undermines public trust. Um, it disrupts the productive nature of a meeting, um a council meeting to get work done. Um, so it was just part of the um commitment around civility and the process to deal with concerns, frustrations, problems. Is that helpful?
Yeah, that's actually very helpful. Um, so I want to say that this is my fourth council meeting overall, and so
Yay!
Um, so the 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 notion of of how these are in practice has only been given in those four council meetings, this being the fourth. Um, so I think, you know, a couple of things stick out to me. Um, and thank you for the clarity. I think it helps me actually uh state what I what I think are considerations and hopefully um opportunities for. So, um, you know, I think, you know, we are all as council members, yes, we are all elected to this body, but we are separately elected, right? Some of us were just recently elected, some of us were elected two years ago. Um, you know, and obviously, those considerations are a part of our role. Um, even if we say, you know, we want to be unified, how we are elected and how we come to this body is obviously of importance because inevitably, that is holding us accountable and really holding us in our seats. Um, and so I think when I when I read corrective comments in private um and and public and 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 praises in public, um, you know, I lead a business, so that makes me, there's two things to that. Um, you know, obviously, in terms of branding and how people see you from the external facing, that may look like a good idea. Um, but I also think the other side of that goes back to my point um in that I mentioned earlier on in the meeting around accountability and what accountability really looks like. Um, because oftentimes, private conversations don't lead to public accountability. Um, and so those times, of course, one would want to correct, right? You know, I always go back to uh my mother, who oftentimes, I was raised with five other brothers. Um, so we were a very, very loud and rambunctious household. Um, and oftentimes, one would need public accountability for all the other brothers to know this was not okay. Uh, my mom did great at talking to us individually, but, you know, if one brother did something, someone else had to know that that was not okay to do, so that person wouldn't run into the same problem. Um, and so I I a consideration I have and and really thinking about this is how this has played out and 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 um our own council and probably previous councils that I've watched. Um, you know, I think about earlier this year, um, excuse me, earlier in my term where um, you know, we had a a conversation around public restrooms. Um, and and how um there were disagreements and in the urgency around that, um, which is again, part of the democratic process and part of the dialogue that needs to happen. Um, but I would I would question if I were not to have brought that up as a public criticism, if it were, the urgency would have been there quicker. And so I I want to be clear, um, as we think about accountability and team building, how constructive feedback um and positive affirmation is said as a council. So I have questions around that. I I don't have a solution, but like I said, it's a consideration I'd like to bring up. Um, and as we move again to other tougher issues, right, around labor negotiations and things that may be seen as, you know, private, right, and and in closed session. And I I understand the legality there. What what, how do we remain as individual members of the council accountable to our constituents? Uh, while also being team players and team builders and supporting one another through processes um uh in in issues that are important to everyone on council? So that would be my first thought. Um, let me know if you want me to move on.
No, I think that's good. Do you do you do you have more? I mean, I have a couple of thoughts I can share, but those are, those are nuances that you have to balance as you govern. Absolutely.
Well, and because they're nuanced, the term norm, um, you know, having them as a norm makes me question whether or not that should be a norm, is what I'm saying, right? Because now we have to love, everybody has to level the playing field in terms of those of us who are new and those of us who've been here two, you know, two years longer. And I I just think that this go, again, but this goes back to my question around accountability and team building and how you bring in uh, you know, new players i- i- and and not allow the new players to only have to assimilate to new norms, right, or or old norms. So that's my first thought and consideration. And like I said, I don't have a solution for it, but I it it just made me think about that a little bit.
So I I would just offer that the 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 issue um that's being addressed by the the norm are really how you engage one another, not what you're engaging on. And that if you're doing your homework, um which I know you all are for council meetings, and you're concerned about accountability issues, you're going to let staff know or you're going to alert people around those concerns so you can have a constructive discussion during the meeting. Um, the that norm is really about the rules of civility. You don't want to humiliate someone, you don't want to chastise someone. You can still deal productively with the issues of accountability in a business meeting, but you're going to do it in a council meeting. You're going to do it by alerting people, I'm going to raise this issue or I need more information on this topic. It looks like the commitment that was made wasn't delivered. I don't see an answer. I don't I don't see the gap here. Why wasn't it? Was there impediment? Was there a barrier? I mean, you're going to do that homework and you're going to talk to the city manager in your um weekly meetings. And tone does matter and it does influence um your your ability to govern. You can all have different perspectives, but the tone matters. And then third, um, you're dealing with policy issues, but it is important and it benefits a governing body to agree on what is your deliberation process. So there's the issue, but what's, what are the milestones in that process? How are you going to do it? Not what are you doing? Um, and so the norms are really meant to establish when somebody walks into a council meeting, what can they expect from the council and what does the council expect from the participant so that you can have a productive business meeting? But it's not meant to, um, what I can think of is the Borg. It's not meant to assimilate people so that there's like one way of thinking um either. Is that, is that helpful?
Uh, sure. I think the, I think my next point is around, um, or next consideration is around, again, the Or next consideration is around again, the, the communication through the city manager. So I think this also goes back to. You know, federalism, right? And understanding levels of government, right? And part, and participatory government. Because you know, and I'm sure every council member probably knows, we are, we have a, a very engaged community. We can always have a more engaged community, but are those, those folks who are very engaged in our community. Make it known to us every day that they are engaged by making public comment, by speaking to us when we go to the coffee shop. This is, this is the beauty of Penole. And in that same regard, I think because we are also a smaller city of twenty, about 20,000 folks. What happens is our, our levels of government in a local level tend to be kind of integrated. So when I say integrated, as they should be, right? Our planning commission. Folks go to our planning commission meetings, they probably go to our city council committee meeting and they're, they're really engaged in that process. And so, you know, I think because they are engaged, they are also very adamant and courageous really. And pushing us to have both tough conversations, but also to make the coordination happen that needs to happen, right? And so I think that, I think a, a, a piece I want to bring up is just this kind of like. How do we as a council ensure that we do communicate to the city manager? And I also want to add a different word to say empower the city manager. And because I think that's a very important thing and what I've seen from past councils, not just in Penole, but other ones is that. City manager empowerment is almost like a, it's a norm of itself, right? Like how do we empower our city manager to take action administratively? While also, you know, having a feedback loop between the council and, and our city manager. So I think for me, that's a great, great piece of what we do as council members. But I also think that it's really important for us to be, to not be tone deaf to what department heads are doing. Outside of the city manager. And I, I, I say that because it, it should not matter who the city manager is. I think that it is important for us as council members to be grounded in what all department heads are doing. Not to micromanage, but to empathize really in the work in that they're doing. And particularly now, how tough that work could be. And so I think for, you know, just to give a prime example, at a last council meeting. You know, I, I spoke about just kind of people's open access to me. And I thought that that should be a thing, right? That everybody kind of supports is, you know, open access to our council. People talking, public comment, you know, you know, setting community groups up to kind of solicit feedback. And this was in my council report and it was followed up unfortunately by what I saw as an inappropriate commentary to. What I saw as, as trying to restrict my access to people, which I thought was a little comical, but. It, it was certainly for me, a, 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 an opportunity that I thought was. Restricting and how we communicate both with each other as a council, but with the public. And so when I see community, communicate with the city manager. I see that as needing to be defined more. Again, this is a norm, so I know that I did not, you know, I wasn't part of the process to communicate with the norm, but I see. Communication as critical as a public coun, as a, as a public council member, but I see it as critical in terms of. Or defining that at least as critical is how do we go beyond just communication with our city manager to enact real change? Right? Or to enact the solutions we want to enact. And so my question and consideration would be like, how do we ensure that individual council members? Can stay and remain connected to the community in the, in the ways that they best know how to communicate? While also following that norm and having an opportunity to do both.
Andrew, did you want to?
Yeah, so I think that norm is, I think when you just read it like that, it's, it's hard to. Because the, the language is so brief in the council norms. It really relates to something quite specific, which I don't, I have not perceived to be an issue in Penole and that's this issue of. Micromanagement of staff by the council and so. This, it's not even really from my perspective, a norms issue because. We have this form of operation, which is the council manager form of operation. There's actually language in the municipal code about what the rules are. So I actually don't think of this as, it feels a little out of place and it's not. It's not meant when it says communication through the city manager, it really means specifically in regard to providing direction to city staff. And the whole idea is individual council members shouldn't be providing direction to department heads about operations. Basically means, you know, if the council collectively wants to see something changed in city operations. The council collectively takes that action, they tell the city manager, I make it happen. But it's not about all sorts of other kinds of communication. So. Council members can communicate amongst themselves, obviously outside of the city manager. That's a totally different issue. Within the confines of the Brown Act, certainly communicate with community members and all sorts of other things. So I think this, the way it reads, it comes across. You know, it might appear broad, but it's really about that very narrow issue in this form of operation we have. And it's also called non-interference. I was not here when these norms were developed. You know, my perspective on the norms is they're quite prescriptive. Some of them are quite procedural and not as aspirational as I would, as I think of norms being. So for instance, it feels like a lot of them are very specific ways of trying to enact more global values like respect. Civility and you know, again, I wasn't here at the time, but I get the impression from reading them. That the council felt the desire to be really prescriptive, to, to have lots of rules about. How we are going to help, you know, systems to support civility and respect. So they, they do read a little prescriptive to me and that this issue of communicate through the city manager. Kind of feels a little out of place to me here because I don't think of that as a norms issue. That's a normal operational thing. And I haven't experienced that as an issue in the time that I've been here, but maybe it was an issue in the past. So I just want to offer that observation that these feel kind of prescriptive. We have separate council procedures. That do lay out the process through which we're going to deliberate on items. There seems like there might be some overlap here. I'd be interested in Christine's perspective about the values and the other council members about, you know, kind of the situation in which the council was in. That gave rise to some of these.
I, I, I think my recollection of the June 19th and mayor and council member Tav and Salimi can, can jump in and I. I, I don't know if council member Tom's attended that session, but I think this is the first cut. They didn't, the council did not have norms previous to this and they weren't necessarily in response to any problems. You know, the council at the time looked at some of the best practices and said, yeah, this makes sense. These seem clear and it's. How we operate and so let's memorialize them. So does all of this discussion help council member Murphy? In, in your understanding? With your question around what does it mean?
It does, and I think that's why we're having the conversation is to clarify these. Oh, I would hope that's one of the intentions of having this conversation is to clarify these norms. As I stated before. Additionally, you know, I think, and thank you city manager Murray for your clarity on that too, because I, I appreciate you. And your awareness because we both have the same shared experience here and, and having not developed these norms and not being here through them. So you know, I just, I, I again, look to that norm. Specifically in reference to again, the, the most recent, you know, council meeting where there was an. Seemed to be a direct issue with openness and communication from myself, right, to, to the public. And I just thought that that was both not only perplexing and was really perplexed by that, but also I thought it was an appropriate commentary. Directed to me. And so my last piece I just want to bring up, which I hadn't seen here, was around the limitation of microaggressions. And I think that is a very, very important aspect of all team building and, and teamwork. Is how do we limit, right, microaggressions and working spaces? Oftentimes, microaggressions are, you know, referenced around just kind of like small, but really important kind of, you know. Tensions, right? Or incidences or actions or statements. That are regarded as kind of like unintentional, right? Or subtle discrimination and a lot of these time, you know, specifically as African American, it shows up in workplaces. But I also think that it shows up in a lot of other arenas. I, I don't identify as a woman or female body. But I'm sure, you know, women deal with this oftentimes in the workplace. You know, I think that, you know, this can oftentimes, and in my experience, I felt. And I'm speaking specifically around my experiences. I, I have felt this as a council member, as a younger council member. These kind of subtle directed comments that aren't at me, but are said aloud, but happen to be right after I speak on something. And so I think that as we think about council norms, I think the norms. Formation also need to be centered around how do we limit microaggressions? You know, and, and again, sometimes these are unintentional, right? And so I think, for example, during this meeting, I have been referenced as Devin once. I'm not too sure if folks reference, noticed that, but that was something that I noticed. I don't think any other council member has been referenced in this meeting by their first name. And so I think there's an opportunity to think about how do we limit microaggressions as, as we build team together? Because when those microaggressions happen, they do a lot to. Really, to really challenge the, the morality, excuse me, not the morality, the morale that we can all have together. And so I, I, I guess my question again in consideration is how do our norms limit microaggressions in our, in our council race? And again, I, I know I don't have a lot of solutions here, but you, Christine, you had asked me. How, you know, what, what my thoughts are, considerations. So that would be.
I think it's, I think it's great. So I heard your comment about considering adding the. Modifying the norm to read empower the city manager. As well as a concern that the city manager shared around. How necessary is the norm of working through the city manager because it's your established form of government? And that potentially the addition of some type of reference to, in order to facilitate. Productive council discussions and policy actions. Explore or avoid or heighten awareness. Around language to, and we could do like IE to avoid micro aggress, aggressions and subtle. Language that undermines the civility and openness inclusiveness of the discussion. I mean, I'm. Kind of make it up on the fly, but I think what we'll do is we'll summarize these comments and then return them to staff. So that there can be a, a fresh version of your norms for deliberation at a future council meeting. But does my review of your comments summarize what your most significant concerns are?
Yeah, I think for the most part, I think I just want to add one more thing. I heard you, I think you pulled something from something I said, but it wasn't thorough, was empower the city manager. But I'd like for us to also empower productive conversations and communication with city staff as well. Specifically department heads. And that would be the conclusion.
Okay, great. We've got that noted. Thank you. Council member Tom, Tom's?
Thank you. I think council member Murphy's comment about microaggression kind of brings up. The previous discussion that we had about continuous learning and education. I just wanted to, to put that, put that together. On a, just a. Typo issue on the council norms where it says public questions, I think it needs to be public questions slash comment. Because if, you know, just so that we're using the same language that's in the agenda. As far as the discussion with the, with staff, I will add that when I joined the council in 2016. I had spent a lot of years as, on the planning commission and I had direct comment with the planning manager. And it kind of surprised me all at once whenever I had communications with the planning manager. Now everything was copied to the city manager. And so that's, you know, that was considered communication through the city manager. So the city manager was aware of the discussions that, that we had. Now it's a normal, you know, normal practice. It's just to, you know, so that he knows what his staff, how his staff is communicating. Because, you know, in some cases, we could be. You know, communicating, asking a department head or, or other staff member. You know, things that could get a little bit out of, you know, out of their kind of job description. So they need to have that, that backup. So I, I, I'm okay with the communication. Through the city manager if that's, you know, clarified a little bit more, just to say that it's just copied, you know. So we can speak directly to the department heads, which I, you know, I have done. Just in this last week on a, a, a couple of times. I think I've done it most times. But as far as the other council norms. Council member Tav mentioned, you know, the, the discussion kind of, you know. Almost felt like you have one bite at the apple and then when it goes to somebody else to sort of interpret you, you know, your comments. You don't have a, it's difficult to come around again to clarify. And I, I see that as a problem on Zoom. I think that, you know, as the technology improves. The mayor running the, the meeting has the ability to, you know, see everybody. You know, see raised hands or, you know, signals that somebody wants to add something. So I think that. I see that really is a problem with, you know, just the fact that we're online and not physically there. But you know, if there's some way that we can improve that, we should. And then the other item is, I think council member Tav mentioned a little bit about our reports. I don't know if it's, if it's a norm here or if it's later on the agenda, but I would like to see. You know, sort of a recap of our reports, maybe emailed to the city clerk. Ahead of time so that she has it for the record, but then if she can distribute it, however it's done. For the purpose of, you know, if council member Murphy is going to report on. You know, one of his committees, if it could be in writing. So that I'm not only referring to my notes, but I've seen it in writing and then the city clerk has it. For the minutes as well. I don't, again, I don't know if it's here or later in the agenda. I think that's all I have to add.
Okay, great. So add, add comments next to the norm that references the public question slash comments. You're comfortable, you know, copying the city manager in addition to working through the city manager. I think on, on some of the intake we're doing today, I'll, I'll work with our team. Sorting which might fall into norms and which may fall into, as Andrew, the city manager mentioned, into procedures. And we're going to have to deal with this issue of the sense that there's not enough time, but certainly Zoom makes. These large group discussions more challenging. But the proposal to add something either here in the norms or in your procedure. Inviting council members to provide written reports and verbal reports of their committee assignments. Regional entities that they're the liaison to, et cetera. Is that correct, council members?
Yes, that's correct.
Great. Council member Salimi?
Yes, so address one each other by, now sharing information, sorry. The point related to sharing information with each other early in the process to avoid surprises. So the council members do not share information with each other. That break the Brown Act. The council member can only have one conversation on a specific subject that is. Agendized with only one council member. Is that correct, city manager, city attorney, cashier?
That's correct. A matter, a matter that's on the agenda, yes.
So, thank you, city attorney. So, so that specific sharing information with each other, I think that was brought up. Last year and somebody as in the council clarified that that pertains between city staff and city. And council members. And I think that's important that to share information with each other early enough. It's between city staff and city, and council. And I think that language was asked also to be added last year. I do remember. I do remember it was not my comment, but one of the council member asked that to be added. So that, um, a lot of time I'm not aware of specific agenda item until the Thursday before that agendized. And I think that is a very important point that needs to be, uh, reminded here. As a council member, I like to have a little bit more notice. I like to know what is coming up with the next three months ahead of me. Because I'm being asked to make decision on the budget in June and we have to vote on the budget in June. And we don't know what's happening a month from now, what is being agendized? So what I think will be helpful, I speak for myself, but I don't know if the rest of the council agrees with me, is that I have a little bit more notice about what is upcoming. Two weeks, uh, the Thursday for the following Tuesday is not enough time for me to be able to organize myself. I like to have at least a spreadsheet that shows what are upcoming issue that will be coming to the council the next six months. I do remember that, uh, uh, city manager, uh, Fitz, I used to have a spreadsheet that you share with me. That'll be helpful if we can have that. That's one comment. And the second item is related to, uh, communication to the city manager. And I do understand that council member Toms mentioned the fact that she always CCs the city manager every time she communicates with the city staff. There has been situations such as, uh, staff, uh, husbands or wife passing away. And then I just want to be able to send flowers to those community members. And I have retained myself because I, I wasn't sure if what that communication line I met, I cannot send them flowers. I cannot call staff members and tell them I'm very sorry for their loss. Or some other times where I'm, uh, that was pre-COVID-19 situation, where I was in regional meetings and, uh, uh, I was, I was with, uh, uh, some, uh, city representative, uh, in, in the public with me. And in the middle of the meeting, I had to ask him a question, a technical question related to one specific item that we were discussing at, at the regional level. And does it mean that I have to email the city manager at 10:00 PM on a Wednesday night to ask the question to, to be answered by the specific, uh, department head? This, uh, it's not, sometimes I have to put myself in a situation where I have to be able to ask that specific question to the department head at that given time. Sometimes at 9:00 PM, we are in a meeting together and I, I'm going to get an answer right away so that I get to represent, you know, to the best of my knowledge. Those have been the situation where as an elected official, I do believe that I, I'm here to represent everybody. I don't even know if the, the people who work for the city of Philadellos knew who the city council members are. I don't even know if they all met us. I also would like to have an opportunity for people who work for the city to get an opportunity to meet the city council so they get to know who they are working for and with. Those are the line of communication item that I would like to, uh, improve as part of communication to the city manager.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Mayor, did you have any other final comments on?
Well, um, this is, this is a great, has been a great opportunity to update some of the, some of the norms that were established. For whatever reasons, some of which I recall, some which I don't, uh, but that also were created, given, given prior council members, I think who did experience, um, what they consider to be, um, reasons for creating some of these statements. And then at the time, for those of us who didn't know any different, because we were new, um, we, we, you know, agreed that, you know, it rang, it rang like they would be useful norms. So, um, um, I appreciate the different suggestions that have been made and I'm looking forward to see how those will, will actually work out. You know, it isn't until we actually live them that, um, that we, and have the experience of testing them out, that we realize that they are going to be useful to us. I appreciate your distinction, um, Christine, about these norms being a means for us to recognize, um, how we work with each other, not necessarily what we work on. What we work on, I take to mean the content and, um, the opportunity to deliberate on that content is each meeting when, um, we have the, where we are, are there to bring information that will, um, allow us to think through the, the rationale and the facts and, and the analysis behind a certain item, uh, any associated costs, et cetera. And, and that complemented by, um, or with public comment then rounds out the discussion. And, and then we have an opportunity to, um, to decide together. I think, well, I recall having conversations with, with some council members that even in pre-COVID times, when we were on the dais, it was a bit unusual to me, or a lot unusual to me, to try to have, uh, a discussion that got into understanding each other and why we were eventually voting as we did, simply by the way we were physically situated. You know, we, we sit on the dais, we turn to each other. And then the procedure, it just seemed stilted. And so it may remain, that may remain. I don't know entirely how to get rid of that. Now we have, um, Zoom that we have to contend with or, or get skilled at. And even still, you know, there are some limitations to that. So, um, I trust that to the extent that we are aware of how we, um, affect each other and our effectiveness in working with each other, that we also have the openness to communicate that individually. Uh, you know, some things are not, are not matters for public presentation, but they are about relationship building and understanding why we say what we do. And I want to clarify something, um, that we also have, um, this matter of, of trying to manage expectations that are placed upon us by members of the public. And so I know from the role of candidate to the role of council member, which is still evolving for me. And now in the privileged role of, of facilitating the meeting and being in the mayor's seat, there's still some learning, a lot of learning and evolution to be had. So, um, bear with me, council members and staff, and I do turn to you to let me know how it is that, um, I am, um, conducting myself, uh, uh, as the, as the mayor, as well as being, I am entirely receptive, um, to, to discovering what it is that I could do to help, um, improve the connection, communication, the relationships that must be had in order to get to being an effective council. So, um, I am all for continuous learning and also for learning from my mistakes. And in fact, a lot of my best learning has occurred from mistakes. So, um, I will hold on to that notion and then hopefully not repeat the same mistakes. But I may be making others and I then, um, appreciate your patience and your understanding that that's, you know, part of this evolution. Uh, on the, on top of that, or an additional layer is, um, encountering situations that are new to us, given the context in which we operate. And that's that larger societal context, you know, the, the, um, the tone on, on the national level, state level, the, um, uh, timing of requests that are made of us. And the example that, um, council member Tave made about that invitation to participate in another agency's, um, director's meeting. You know, that was, that came in between our council meetings and the process, we didn't even know, we, the city manager and I, didn't even know the, it, it content of what that discussion was going to be. But it was an example of how other agencies' timing and the actions and the input that they request of us as council members, and this holds true for the public as well, doesn't always match our processes, the processes in place, whether they're council meetings, when we're scheduled to get together. Uh, the fact that we have to abide by an established, um, uh, rule related to the Brown Act or rules of communication related to the Brown Act. Um, so, you know, there's, that's all of, all of that as well. Sometimes it's discovery on the spot. Sometimes it's information that, um, uh, comes to us that requires rethinking how we've been working. And so here we are.
Great. Thank you, mayor. So, um, I, I'm cognizant of the time. I jinxed this entire timeframe when I said, we're ahead of schedule. But this was, um, a fabulous discussion. And, um, uh, it just reminds me again, um, what a great council you have because everyone has been so thoughtful, uh, and really sought to understood what are these norms and how do we operationalize them? What, what do they look like in practice? And that is critical. So what I have heard today from the five of you are a combination of updates to the norms, some recommendations that would potentially fall under procedures. And then the third are potentially some process tweaks. So what I'm going to commit to is, um, Ashley and I will, will take the notes, which she's documented, this conversation I have as well. And, um, in our report, we'll include, um, our thoughts on, um, what those, um, changes look like. And then again, today is really for council discussion, direction. Um, it'll come back to you for action at a later date that, that we'll provide through the city manager and the city manager will take another cut at as well. But I, I want to thank you for, um, your commitment to staying in this conversation and, um, being so attentive to it. So I'm, I, right now, any other closing comments before we just jump into? Go ahead, council member Tave.
Well, you know, uh, it, it, this is one of those things that as we go around, I mean, I, I'm sure everybody's thinking, wow, we have a lot of good information and, and a lot of discussion that we want to have. But, um, one thing that came to mind and I just wanted to add was, was the use of workshops. I mean, just what we're in right now, um, especially how we use them for what items as we go into the next phase of this and prioritizing, making sure that we have, because it's a little bit informal and you could have a lot more discussion set around one topic.
Got it.
And really dive into those details. Cause something that, uh, uh, Mayor Protent mentioned was, was, you know, a lot of times the details are, are with the engineer working on it. Uh, you know, three tiers down from the senior, uh, from the city manager, that would have that opportunity to give that background. Similar to, uh, uh, Mayor Protent sitting on, on WITAC. If it's a transportation issue and, and, and him being apprised of all those details, helps him represent us better. So in, in, in the various commu-, uh, the various, um, uh, committees. But I, I did want to also mention it, it's something that kind of rang true with, um, with, uh, the mayor's comments is, is, and, and thinking about the whole, the whole school thing. I, I don't know, guys, if it's, if we need to feel compelled to meet with, you, you know what I mean? Like if somebody says, hey, we need to have a meeting really quickly with you guys. I, I don't know if we, we, you know, if what the right answer is. Do we stop? Wait a second. That, that's something that the whole city is going to be interested in. Let's pull that back. Or, or, or is it something that, hey, we'll take note? But I, I don't know what the answer is. And I know there's a lot of complexity to it, but, but that issue of timing and, and what that means for us, um, and how, how that's explored.
Okay. Thank you very much, council member Tave. We definitely have that issue and interest on the intake. Um, and, and that's clear, but I'm, I'm glad you, I'm glad you, um, reminded us. So, um, real quickly, I want to just spend about four minutes running through roles because I, I'd like to give all of you, um, 20-ish minutes to stand up, stretch, shut off your video, shut off your microphone, get a beverage and a snack. Cause we'd like to, um, return, um, to hear from the, from the city manager. So, um, if you're comfortable, I'll move through the, the piece on roles real quickly. Um, and again, as we discussed, the, there are really, uh, four primary roles in, in your, in your governance system. And, and there can be some nuances related to that. But the council owns the policy role. The city manager owns with, under the direction, um, and supervision of his, of his or her staff. The administrative roles. The commissions and committees provide an advisory role. And then your city attorney, obviously a legal role. So, um, what's critical is the clarity that the, the council owns that policy role. And they're, you know, they're really flying the 757, uh, airplane at 32,000 feet. Um, their eye is high on those policy issues, the long-term, uh, direction of, uh, the organization. And, um, they provide direction to the city organization related to what are the service areas, the service levels, special projects, and stay in touch with, um, the constituents they serve. The city manager's role is to implement the will of the council, handle day-to-day operation, manage staff, and then obviously, um, conduct due diligence on policy review and provide the best options and assessment of those options. And the relationship works best when, um, you know, that policy administrative, um, roles piece is well defined, um, and, and followed. Related to, uh, the, next slide, Ashley. The council member role, again, long-term interest. Work closely with the city manager, meet with the city manager regularly. The next slide talks about the mayor's role. The mayor serves as the, um, obviously runs the council meetings, serves as the initial point of contact for external agency, serves as a sounding board for the city manager, and then fulfills all the other, you know, roles of a, a city council member. For the, um, city attorney's role, um, or I'm sorry, boards and commissions, they advise the council, um, as the council asks for their advice or if there's some type of regulatory requirement like the, like the planning commission. And as you know, they convene the public. They gather that input, they gather the information and they analyze it and they incorporate that in their recommendation to council. But board and direction, I'm sorry, commissions and committees operate under the direction of the council. They're not operating independently, um, and certainly in collaboration with staff. And then for the city attorney's role, represents the entire organization, not an individual member of council or an individual member of the public, provides a lot of legal advice on a lot of complex issues, right, Eric? And, and they keep getting more complex, fair and partial, full disclosure. And then the city manager, um, again, um, you know, directs the operations of the organization based on the will of the council. And, um, the council, city manager, staff partnership works best when the roles are well-defined and, um, people, you know, remain in, remain in their lanes, but also are sharing, um, and that's what we've heard a lot about today, really sharing information in compliance with, um, you know, the Brown Act, but, um, providing either processes or opportunities for, um, the exchange of information. So everybody's operating with the most current and best information that they have. So with that, um, any other comments or questions about roles? Or went through that pretty quickly, but I, I think all of you are well-versed. Okay. So with that, I am going to suggest that, um, is everybody comfortable reconvening in, um, 20 minutes at 12:31? Is that enough time or should we go to 12:41? So we have a full 30-minute break. I'd like to hear the group's interests.
I'm okay with 20 minutes.
Will that be enough?
20 minutes is good.
Okay, wonderful. Well, this has been, um, a wonderful discussion. Thank you. We have a little bit to go. It's going to be just as exciting and captivating. So, um, we'll see you at exactly 12:31. See you shortly. Thank you.
And please be sure to turn off your video and mute yourselves while you're on your break.
Good afternoon. So we are now entering into the second phase of the council team building workshop. Again, I'm Christine Butterfield with Management Partners. And as we transition into the city manager's presentation of the city's work plan through the remainder of the fiscal year, including the strategic plan and the tentative timeframe for the strategic plan priorities. The city manager also wants to discuss the lengthy list of council requests and a proposed process for the disposition and intake, essentially which of these can be completed in the remaining fiscal year? And also a discussion of how some of them are, may already be underway related to ongoing projects. So Management Partners, we just wanted to share this visual concept that for most cities, you know, 60 to 70% of their work plan is already defined by local code, state laws, and federal requirements. And with the strategic plan, that brings the city's capacity up to its 90th percentile or 95th percentile. So the big rocks are really the core functions. And the additional council requests are really, they fall into that 10% or 5% capacity. And so the city manager has reviewed the list and has proposed those that he and his team believe they can complete in the remaining cycle of this fiscal year. So let's move on to the next couple of slides, one more. So again, in this next piece, from 12:30 until about 1:30, 1:45, you'll hear from the city manager on the work plan highlights. And also take a look at the council requests that he and his team believe can be completed through the remainder of the current fiscal year. And we'll do our best at Management Partners to take detailed notes on any thoughts related to the proposed disposition of the council request list as well as the intake process. So thank you. With that, I'll turn it over to Andrew.
Great. Thank you very much. Dave, can we pull up the slide deck? Yeah. So as you all know, and as Christine mentioned, there are two main portions of the workshop today. One was the review of the norms and team building. And the second portion is to get direction from the city council on staff's work plan for the remainder of this fiscal year. We've talked sometime about the need to check in about both the timeline for the strategic plan strategies and also the timeline and disposition of the many pending future council agenda items. So staff has some proposed mechanisms to get through those that we wanted to get your feedback on. Next slide, please. So what we're going to cover in this session, which as Christine mentioned, we're going to take about an hour on, is a review of our city services, including a pretty big picture view that we're going to be talking about both today, but also as part of the budget process, the long-term financial plan process, just some useful context. We'll talk about some proposed updated timeframes for the strategic plan strategies. Most of them are on the same timeframe as were proposed back in August 2020, so there hasn't been any slippage. And then we'll also talk about a proposed process and timeline, as I mentioned, for the future council agenda items. So we're going to start really big picture regarding the city services. And that's going to provide useful confrontation, context rather, as I said, for the conversation today and also soon upcoming conversations on the budget and long-term financial plan. Big picture, you know, many levels of government in the United States, distinct responsibilities. The federal government's doing stuff, the state is, county, city, and special districts. And in that form of government, cities are primarily responsible for some particular service areas. Those are public safety, land use management, regulation, and public works. Cities often are involved in recreation, sometimes utilities. But those last two are also often provided by special districts. So I know we've all talked about this before and you're all familiar with this idea, but Pinole is considered a full-service city and what that means. And that's a specific term in public administration. It means that the city provides all of the traditional municipal services, opposed to having them provided by special districts or the county. As you know, and we've discussed before, Pinole provides fire protection, also sewer service, that often elsewhere provided by special districts. So we're really full-service plus because we have some other special programs that are a bit uncommon. So we do a lot for a small city, which is great. It's a source of pride. We have the opportunity to provide well-synchronized services to the community, but it's also a challenge. You have to have the bandwidth to be able to coordinate all those different activities. The vast majority of city staff are dedicated to providing those core public-facing services. So police and fire, land use management, building safety. We don't do transit, but we do local transportation infrastructure like streets, signals, bike lanes, et cetera, and our sewer service. So those functions right there are 90 or more percent of how all city staff spend their time. We also have some other really important public-facing services. You know, outdoor recreation space like our parks and facilities, playgrounds, barbecue areas, our recreational educational programming, cable television programming, childcare, senior services, and others. And those are the pluses in full-service plus, I'd say. And to make all of those, you know, frontline, public-facing services possible, we have some behind-the-scenes staff who help with the infrastructure, like our finance staff, legal, human resources, IT, records, and facilities and equipment. So those are the big buckets into which our city staff are divided in terms of how they spend their time. And I think what's really important to recognize in Pinole's case is that we're doing all these different services, we're full-service, full-service plus. And it consumes almost all of staff's time just to do the routine functions in each of those service areas. So I know we were talking earlier today about the vision of the council for the city. And, you know, we want to be innovative, we want to be vibrant. And, you know, we have a, we'll have to work overtime to synchronize the resource allocation to, so the staff has the capacity to do some things like that. So the routine activities that consume, you know, most of city staff's time and, you know, police are things like prevention engagement, patrol, investigations, our normal fire activities, current planning, meaning looking at current proposals, long-term planning and code enforcement, our building safety programs, as I mentioned, some of our main public work stuff, our treatment plant, stormwater, and then a bunch of other, you know, miscellaneous items, really significant that I've called and a lot of communities refer to as community services like recreation. So again, we're doing a bunch of different services. And we're doing a lot of routine activities that are not, you know, are just normal, turn the crank of those different functions. And that's where almost all of city staff's time is going right now. In addition to just doing the routine stuff, staff, as time permits, works on internal process improvement projects. And so we're doing just, you know, turning the crank every day. And then we're spending some time trying to make process improvements. They ensure that we're being efficient, meeting ever-evolving regulatory requirements. And I have a little list on this slide and the next of some of the process improvement projects we've undertaken. Despite working under COVID, we are trying to make incremental improvement, you know, in our processes. And those will be visible to the community and better service delivery. So just in the first half of this fiscal year, we adopted for the first time a telecommuting policy, which we never had before. We have a new system for electronic signatures. As you know, we brought to council recently an updated procurement policy. We're developing an online payment system. We're updating our financial procedures and documentation. We're implementing a pilot program for implicit bias screening. And we have some new information systems at the fire department for incident response, new programs for wildland fire mitigation, a better grass management programs, and some better tools for our solicitation of proposals for capital projects. So, you know, staff across all these different service areas spends almost all of their time on routine stuff, tries to find other time to make internal process improvements. This is a conversation that we've had a little bit lately. In my time here, I've identified, and I know this is not new to council members that have been on the council for a little while. Some of our departments frankly need additional resources just so that they can do routine activities and process improvements. And one analysis that we're conducting to help illustrate and assess that need is one of the strategic plan strategies was conducting a citywide organizational assessment. The consultants who completed that are actually going to be presenting their findings at Tuesday's council meeting. And they are going to be identifying some areas where, you know, through their benchmarking, they've noticed that some city departments needed additional staff just to do the routine stuff. So once we've done, you know, the routine stuff and some of the process improvements, unfortunately, staff has pretty limited ability to work on additional council-assigned tasks and special projects. And I use that term, council-assigned tasks and special projects, to refer to the strategic plan strategies and the other council requests which come through the future agenda items mechanism. This is just, this is fictitious. It's just supposed to illustrate something. But to help visualize this idea, imagine that we have, you know, this six different departments. We really have about 10. It takes that green bar, you know, this is a chart of staff's capacity. That red line is 100% of current staff's capacity. For some departments, you know, it, just to do the routine stuff actually takes a little bit more staffing than they already have. If they want to do some improvements, some staff, you know, some departments can do routine stuff and improvement with their existing staff. Others have some time to work on council assignments, but a lot of them are right at that line. You know, one way to think about it is the city operation is a little bit like an iceberg. And a lot of the really routine stuff is the green bars that's happening under the surface. And there's really not that much above the water that we get to, that's discretionary, that we can use for special projects under the current staffing levels. So that's really just a policy matter for the council to deliberate on is whether we want to add some resources and staffing so that we can do some additional special projects or service expansions. This is just another way to visualize it, think about what the departments are working on. They've got their routine activities, they're making improvements over time to implement fast practices and keep up with legal requirements. And then some departments have assigned strategic plan strategies and also other council tasks. So that was the big picture on city services. And a lot of it, you know, a lot of what city staff work on is behind the scenes, just nuts and bolts activities. I now want to talk about the strategic plan and our timeline for the strategies. And we'll also talk about the other council requests. So just to recap for, perhaps for members of the public who are watching this, the city council adopted a strategic plan that covers 2020 through 2025, a five-year period, back in February 2020. As I mentioned earlier, it identifies four goals, safe and resilient, financially stable, vibrant and beautiful, and high performance. And within that strategic plan and under those four goals, there are 22 individual strategies, which are really special projects that staff has directed through the strategic plan to undertake over five years. And, you know, I was felt really fortunate when I came to the city about a year ago to have this strategic plan because I think it's really thoughtful and identifies really foundational bricks and mortar efforts that the city needs to undertake. So a complement to the strategic plan is something called the implementation action plan. And that's a kind of a more detailed schedule of when staff is going to undertake all of the 22 strategies. So we presented that to council, which council accepted back in August 2020. And I wanted to take part of this workshop time today to provide the council with an update on the status of those projects. And so staff and I have reviewed the timeline that was in the original IAP that was adopted back in August 2020 and are, just wanted to provide some proposed updated timelines. One thing that the original IAP lacked was the completion dates. We weren't entirely certain. We knew when we were going to be kicking off these strategies, but we weren't certain when they were going to be completed. So we've had some more time to think about that. And in the packet for today's meeting, we had an updated proposed timeline. And nothing, only one thing has changed about the proposed start dates. The way we have it lined up right now, we're going to start work on 15 of the 22 strategies this fiscal year, and we're going to complete six of them. And we're excited to work on those projects. Some are smaller than others and will be easier to complete more quickly. But that feels like good progress, I know, to the staff to be getting started on all of those important ones. So there's really, you know, we didn't know until we had gone through the process of reviewing all the strategies line by line, whether we were going to have any changes, feel like there are any needed changes to the timelines. I'm happy to say that after reviewing them, we still think that we're on track basically for all the strategies. And so this is more of a communication of information, not as many decisions to be made as I thought might be the case. Wondering whether any of the council members, I want to stop here for a check-in, find out whether any of the council members have any questions or comments about the proposed new timeline for the strategies. And again, it's, you know, it's not very different from the timelines we adopted back in August, so. Any council members have any questions or comments or suggested changes to the timelines? We're still on track for those and are, you know, working underway and a lot, we're going to get six of the 22 done this year. Okay. So we will publish that updated schedule and timeline on the city council, or sorry, the city's webpage, strategic plan site. So thank you for confirming that. And as I mentioned, a lot are underway. We're going to hear a presentation just this coming Tuesday on the first complete strategy, which is the organizational assessment. Then we'll be completing the emergency operations plan and others later this fiscal year. So be interesting to talk with you all about those. One thing that we hadn't determined as part of the strategic plan is a regular reporting and update schedule for the city council. So we want to propose that we provide a quarterly update to the council on the status of all the projects. I think it makes sense to do that on the same timing as we do the budget updates. So if that's okay with you, we will proceed in that way. You know, we bring to the council on a quarterly basis, updates on the budget status, our revenues and expenditures. And it seems sensible to provide an update on the strategic plan status at that time as well. In addition, as you know, when we adopted the strategic plan, the intention was that it would be a living document. Nobody expected that when it was created, we would foresee all of the strategies and goals we might want to carry out and work on over the course of five years. So we had talked about checking in midterm on the strategic plan with the council to make sure it still seems like the right set of strategies. But we'd never really defined what that timeframe would be. So we talked about it as staff, and we think that it makes sense to conduct a pretty thorough review of the strategic plan annually as part of the budget process. And we're going to be working on the budget in just a few months. And so we're proposing that we bring the strategic plan, and that will really be an opportunity for council to decide whether they want to change any of the strategies. And maybe you want to add some, maybe you want to remove some. And we're hoping that that schedule and timing makes sense to the council. So I want to stop for a sec to hear whether the council has any questions or concerns or feedback on that proposed schedule for providing status updates and also doing an annual, more thorough review of the strategic plan. Do those processes sound okay? Do those processes sound okay? We've got some nods, okay? I know it's right after lunch, well, it's hard to jazz up the timeframe of the review of the strategic plan, but I appreciate people giving it some thought. As I said, I was really happy and I know that the staff are really happy to work on these projects. I do think they're really, the strategic plan really thoughtfully identifies some bricks and mortar projects that are going to be really important to this city. Next slide, please. So, there are two major work plans that city staff has from the city council. So, we're doing all of our normal stuff, all of our routine activities. And then council assigns staff special projects and one of that, one of those lists of assignments is the strategic plan. And then the other one is the future agenda items mechanism. So, the strategic plan has 22 great ideas and projects to improve city services, but that's not by any means the complete list. So, over the course of the year, council identifies new service opportunities, ways to improve operation. And the way that council right now can task city staff with special projects or other types of follow-up work is through this mechanism we have on city council agendas called the future agenda item mechanism. As I mentioned before, current, you know, staff, under our current staffing levels have a limited ability to tackle all of those. When I came, I inherited a pretty significant pending list of special projects and we've gotten through some this year, but we still have a long list. And so, I wanted to talk today about a mechanism for getting through some of those more expeditiously. Just, you know, for perspective and context, from December 2018 through January 2021, council approved 140 future agenda items. So, that's, you know, four or five a meeting. Staff has completed 78 during that period, including some, you know, I think some notable recent ones, including the temporary eviction moratorium, the temporary outdoor dining permits. We had a city food drive that kind of turned into a monthly food distribution program. We installed downtown holiday tree lights for the first time in a while. We did a basketball court renovation in memory of David Patrick Underwood. And recently, we kicked off our COVID-19 small business assistance program. So, we've been able to respond to a bunch of the council's requests for future agenda items and tasks, but we still have a long list of 61. And unfortunately, we just don't have the bandwidth with our current staffing levels to complete all of those pending 61 in the foreseeable future. And so, I wanted to talk today and get your direction on a process for categorizing them and trying to address most of them before the end of this fiscal year. So, in the packet, you saw your, the list of 61 pending items and they do span over, you know, a two-year period. Staff wants to deliver those and complete those for the council and community as expeditiously as possible. When we looked at them in a little more detail, the mechanism, kind of strictly speaking, is that these items or tasks will return to a council meeting as a future agenda item. But in fact, they're really a collection of different types of tasks and assignments, not all of which I don't think, you know, would be best suited by bringing back to a future council meeting. Some of them are just informational, some of them are really about budget issues specifically, others are about capital projects. And some are really significant special projects where it's not really just a matter of bringing it back to a council meeting, it's dedicating a lot of staff time. So, in going through this list, we observed that we thought the 61 items fell into a few different buckets. And in the packet for today's meeting, we have the 61 items kind of grouped into these buckets. And we think an expeditious way to work through this backlog and help us catch up is to address some of them through normal standard processes as opposed to being standalone future council items. So, for instance, six of the issues are really budget issues and I think can be appropriately addressed through the upcoming budget process. A number of them are about capital improvements. And again, we have a regular process to discuss our capital improvement program and that's our CIP process. Some of the items are really just informational, like council wanted to know what the status of a certain project was. And I think those can pretty expeditiously be handled through memorandums to the city council. A number of them are requests for council future actions. So, the council wanted to see a resolution or proclamation come back at a future agenda, future council meeting. And so, we do think 20 of the 61 really are best suited to come back as part of a future council meeting. And then lastly, some of them are really large, significant, special projects that staff needs to schedule pretty far in advance and we think should be considered as part of the next budget process or strategic plan update. So, this proposal that we kind of group things and deal with some of them through existing processes or more expeditious process than putting them on a future council meeting is, would help us efficiently and expeditiously get through this list of backlog items. So, I want to stop here. I know this is a new idea and we're trying to handle it, you know, a long list of many different requests for follow-up. And I think, you know, we want to be able to get the information and the follow-up done for council as quickly as possible. We want to do it efficiently. I also think it would be gratifying to staff to get to work through all of these. So, I wanted to hear the council's feedback and get council direction on this proposed way of dealing with this, these work plan items, this future council agendas list. Does anybody want to weigh in in general or, yeah, council member Toms?
I'll kick it off. I see a lot of things are, you know, asked for and requested at the end of every meeting. And instead of staff responding saying, well, that's a capital improvement plan issue, it'll be brought back traditionally in the fall or traditionally in September or take a look at your list. And so, if we had an annual list given to all of the council members that say that, you know, quarterly in March, June, September and December, we're going to review the budget. In September, we're going to review, start reviewing the capital improvement plan. You know, when these things come back regularly and how some of these issues would fit into that, that might be a way to, you know, instead of growing the list, just direct where that item is going to land. And then I also had a question because I do recognize the limits of staff time. And that is, if we want to have a proclamation or a resolution or something, is it the expectation that the council member wants staff to research and draft up the resolution? Or is it the expectation that, you know, that whoever's requesting it would like to put forward a resolution and would have done that research and forward it for consideration? I know that there's some discussion about Black History Month. You know, there's a number of proclamations, you know, maybe about Earth Day, Arbor Day, Disability Awareness Month and so on and so forth. Is that something that whoever's requesting it should do the research and bring that forward? So, that's kind of a discussion item.
Okay, I'll take a crack at a quick response and then we can hear from others as well. Yeah, I absolutely agree. In fact, one of the items on the future items list is your request, council member Toms, for a schedule of recurring annual agenda items. And we are proposing to send that out to the council. I agree that having that, you know, our normal standard processes as an opportunity to deal with some of these issues of interest to the council is a good approach. So, what we're going to talk about today is both some specific proposals for how to work through this backlog, but also having gone through this exercise, it occurred to staff that, you know, this future agenda items list is actually a bunch of different types of requests for follow-up. And I do think it would be good for us going forward to categorize items when council requests them of us so we know how to respond to them. So, you know, I think it would be good to have a more, a bigger conversation when we're doing intake during that portion of the council meeting to get a clear sense of what council wants to have done with the item of interest to them. And that would be an appropriate time to say, well, is it, would it be acceptable? Perhaps we put this on the list to deal with in April as part of the annual budget process. So, I do think that's a great idea. I'll defer to the city clerk Heather or the city attorney if they want to offer an idea about what they've seen historically in terms of the practice regarding proclamations and resolutions. I've seen it happen all sorts of different ways, so I'd love to hear from them what they think the standard tradition has been.
Yes, this is city clerk Yehu. So far, our experience with putting drafting proclamations tends to be a combination. Sometimes the requests come in from community members. If they're council requested, we can certainly work with the council member who is requesting and have it be a collaborative effort to drop the proclamation typically it is. And the city clerk's office usually takes the lead in drafting those and, you know, working in any input and revisions from council.
I agree with Heather.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question, council member Toms?
It did, thank you.
Okay. And as you, just to preview something, another topic we're going to talk about soon, we might want to consider some revisions to the council meeting procedures that might specify a little bit more about how those things work so that everybody's clear on. Other council members want to, council member Tave, did you raise your hand?
The mute button fell off the screen, sorry. So, that graphic was really descriptive with that green bar. What my question is, is how do we build that capacity? Are there ways to increase efficiencies? Things that come to mind, like a small item would be like, if there was a better mower out there, let's say to mow the lawn in half the time, right? Do we look at as a city, like for me, and I can't speak for the rest of the council, but for me, I would want to invest in those type of equipment, procedures, processes that would build capacity by increasing efficiency. So, another thing that came to mind was this list, right, that we're trying to get for all of our projects. There may be some, you know, grant obscure that relates to trash bans here and then quickly moves that item to the top of the list. So, I mean, are there ways for us to invest into the city staff, into their process to help build up capacity within that green, that green bar? And what are those strategies or what are some of those ways to do that, I guess is the question?
Yeah, so we are, I mean, those internal process improvement projects that I talked about and that actually is really just kind of a shortlist, we're doing more than that. So, the city is continually investing. And so, yeah, I mean, over time, that green bar would get a little bit lower, right? Because it would take less city staff to do the routine stuff because we're improving our processes. The city staff is pretty lean and in my view, you know, efficient. I mean, one thing that happened in Pinole, as I have learned in my time here is the city, you know, was in pretty perilous financial condition right around the beginning of the Great Recession and it needed to make some pretty significant reductions in expenditures, including staffing. And some of those staff levels were never refreshed following the recession. And so, it's left us in the situation which this graphic illustrates, which is there are some departments that really don't have even enough staff to do, you know, or barely enough staff to do the routine stuff and a little bit of process improvement. So, I think the way to get to that, and we have, you know, good staff, we have good department heads, it's really a question of bandwidth. And when the organizational assessment findings and recommendations are presented on Tuesday, they will tell us about some key areas where we need to have a couple more staff. We just need a couple more staff in some places so that they can identify those efficiency opportunities. You know, we just have, if you don't have enough staff, you know, we've got in some departments, some staff that are so overwhelmed that they, you know, don't even have the bandwidth to think about efficiencies and changing processes, which requires a little bit of overhead. So, I think the basic, and you know, we have a strategic plan strategy on identifying best practices. So, we've got a framework to make those improvements over time. We just need, I think the main missing ingredient right now is we need a couple other staff who can, you know, have the time to be, to provide some thoughtful assessment of where we can make improvements. And then, once we've done that work, we've instituted those improvements, we're a little bit more efficient, we'll be able to get to more. We'll both be able to get to more routine stuff and we'll be able to get to more special council projects.
So, I guess.
Oh, sorry, yes.
Through the chair, if I may, I just wanted to offer just one example, council member Tave, and it's in support of Andrew's point, you know, we do, we are looking at some things internally right now. I'll just give you one concrete example, you know, the city council adopted its procurement policy recently. We're in the process right now of creating a procedures manual that can be used by staff to help them interpret the procurement policy. It's going to require fewer questions of legal, it's going to require fewer questions of the city manager. Because staff, everyone who's individually procuring contracts, they're going to know, just have kind of a how-to guide on how to do that. So, that's going to create efficiencies and, you know, less time for legal and maybe even the city manager. So, we're trying to do some of those things currently, but I think Andrew's absolutely right. A lot of this is just more of a bandwidth issue.
It's those kind of things that I'm wondering how we, how we capture more of that because it feels to me like the department heads during that Great Recession and taking that hit, it just feels this way, I mean, I haven't heard too much from department heads about that, but that with lower staff, you obviously are going to be taking on more, right? And to your point, Andrew, that you get to the point where processes start to develop interdepartmental, right? Like in that process, one person may be more efficient at grants than the other person and there's no way to share that information, you know. And some grants are easier to get than others, but what I'm thinking about is, is just what you were saying, is how do we standardize that process across the board to make this easy or make those functions easy for everybody else? And what kind of investment, and I know there's going to be a money component to that, what kind of investments so we can start looking at that as well to build that capacity? But the other flip side to that is, how do we augment? Is there a way to, I know with finance, we had, when Andrea left, we had a contractor come in to help supplement, you know, the financial component? Are there ways to enhance our department heads by adding contract work and then allowing them to build that capacity back up to give them the breathing room to start building out those efficiencies? I'm just wondering if that's something that is considered as well?
So, yeah, it is, I mean, we're considering all options and the council has made investments which, you know, I think wise prudent investments in that kind of augmentation. So, that example you just raised of having, hiring a financial services consulting firm to add some bandwidth. There's just a backlog of some best practices and procedural stuff that is not sexy work, but the city really needs to work its way through. And it's making up for a backlog of, you know, kind of probably a decade of those things having been on the shelf. And we're making good progress, but we've probably got a couple more years of doing that. And so, between things that are really internal back office stuff like policies and procedures, automation, we're also working on the strategic plan strategies. And in a couple of years' time with some additional staff, we'll be, you know, running at modern best practices and I think have more capacity to do some really exciting things. I really do think the critical path, you know, the end of the spear on the critical path is getting a couple of new full-time staff people in to work in some functions that just haven't gotten enough attention. And coincidentally- And coincidentally, they relate to some of the headlines the council observed earlier in this workshop about things you want Pinole to be recognized for. So a lot of those are economic development, community development projects or public works projects. Those are areas where we really have limited staff and the organizational assessment that will be presented on Tuesday will say that we need some additional staff in those areas. So I really think that's the, you know, getting some additional good people in here who can do some of the normal work, but also some of the leadership on these improvement efforts is really the most critical first step. Other council members, questions, observations? Oh, yes. Mayor Martinez Rubin.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate your presentation of categorizing the different tasks and projects so we can have an understanding of how staff regards these. It's simple enough for us to come up with notions about what we would like to see. Sometimes it's not so simple, but nonetheless, we make a request. And I think one of the experiences that we have had as new council, relatively new council members, and I think it goes both ways also on the part of staff, is to have a sense of frustration about our requests not being met. And then that filters eventually to the public as well, because those requests stem from public interest and or need. And along those lines, to match that interest and need with what is actually doable and falls within the realm and or slash jurisdiction of a local government. So I know it's helpful to me to see that some of the requests, you know, will have some successes between now and the end of the fiscal year. Some of those will be with regard to getting more information that I'm hopeful in the form of the memorandums, that I think will feed into the larger projects. I'm hopeful that the, that once we're presented with information that we are unaware about of or not knowledgeable of, that we will also, that information will also trigger in our minds slightly different approaches or modifications to the requests that we might have made up until now. So it's helpful to, for me, to see that that information is forthcoming, as well as to understand better how the staff regards the larger projects, those special projects, and why they are so. So to the extent that I can try to be patient about not seeing a certain project come to fruition, I also have to recognize that, you know, some processes have been in place that have worked, they're lengthy, but along with that length of time comes what I think we're all desirous of, and that is to have that public input ongoing, to inform those special projects. And that's part of the reason that they can take that amount of time and why ordinarily we see recurrent means of addressing some of these larger projects, the budget process, the capital improvement plan process, et cetera. So, thank you.
Thank you. Council members, Murphy or Salimi? Oh, council member Salimi, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you, city manager. You mentioned in your presentation that you would like to make this report on a quarterly basis. I was wondering, are you referring to your key operational report or is that just that specific report? Last week, on January 22nd, I believe, a few weeks ago, you sent us a report that summarizes all the key issues. And I'd like that report to be updated every two weeks or once per month?
Yeah, that's actually a separate thing. So as council member Salimi is referring to, I have adopted a recent new practice of providing a bi-weekly report to the council on key operational matters. The quarterly reports I'm talking about in this presentation are a quarterly report on the status of the strategic plan strategies and a quarterly report on our progress on future council agenda items. So I think that we've had, the council's had a little bit of a, my understanding is had a little bit of a mysterious process regarding the future council agenda items list. And I'd like to, so that everybody knows, both like to provide a quarterly update to the council on, you know, what is still outstanding on that future agenda items list. I don't think that we've had a dialogue or communication about that recently. So the two quarterly reports I'm proposing that staff will newly do is one on the strategic plan status and the other is the status of the disposition of all of these future agenda items.
Thank you, city manager. My next question for you, it's related to staffing. I do agree that we are understaffed and I think I've been elected two years ago with a few items on my agenda that it looks like we are understaffed and we cannot meet the goals of having those items being worked on in a timely manner. As you can see, that this request is increasing on a weekly base, on a monthly basis, we're adding more items on those lists that we can actually have staff work on. The next question that you asked was, how can you, what's the list of priority? I know that the FIRE study is one of my priority, and I know that we had done some studies, and I know by experience from two years ago that they had many different steps and conversation, and the public needed to be involved in that entire process took more than a year. And the FIRE study needs to be deciding of what we want to do with the FIRE department. It's something that the city of Pinole needs to vote on and also the, we need to put it on the ballot, I believe. The second item that I wanted to discuss on was the charter city with the potential real estate transfer tax that would allow the city to increase an additional $1 million per year of revenue. And I think this is something that needs to be put in a general election. And as we are moving forward, it looks like we will be lacking revenues, so this is one of the options to increase the city revenues. The other items with the project labor agreement, I believe that is something that needs to be put in place for the union to be able to work in the city. And I believe also one of the other items was the fires house discussion that was brought up by council member Murray before he retired last year. Thank you.
Sure, I'll respond to those just briefly. The consultants completed the FIRE study early in 2020. It was the decision at that time to defer a presentation of it until we were returned to in-person council meetings because we thought that would enable the highest degree of public engagement on that issue, which obviously is of great community interest importance. We, when that decision was made, we didn't think that we'd be doing virtual meetings for a year. So the consultants are actually scheduled to present the FIRE study at the council meeting February 16th. So just in two weeks' time, the ESCI consultants will come back and present their findings and recommendations from the FIRE study. So that'll be complete, there is a strategic plan strategy, one of the 22, to implement the recommendations of the FIRE study. So after we receive the report from the consultants, Chief Weincoop and I are going to have our recommendations on what we think the city should do as next steps. The council will make decisions and then we'll go ahead with the implementation. So that'll be completed soon. The charter city is one of the pending items. I am certain that we will be working on that when the timing is right with respect to the ballot timing. So as you know, we were pretty far along in that process when COVID hit. I think the timing for that, if the city council again wants to consider moving in the direction of a charter city and an increased real property transfer tax, the timing will be starting on that early next calendar year. So I'm certain that city staff will be available for that because that's really a significant issue. Project Labor, I think, is one of the items that we said is significant and we would recommend that the council discuss as part of the upcoming budget process. So if we need to increase staff bandwidth to deal with that, we can ask for some appropriate budget. So that reminded me of one other comment you raised before, council member Salimi, that I wanted to circle back on, which is, one of my goals in coming here has been trying to improve communication and transparency by having clearer and more thorough written documents. And so our excellent new finance director, Ms. Gillyery, and I, and the rest of the staff are going to be working on having a more thorough text narrative in our upcoming budget document. And one thing that we'll be including is our internal process improvement projects that we're envisioning for the coming year. This is also relevant to a comment you made, council member Tave. So we'll be identifying what those process, internal process improvement projects we're going to be working on next fiscal year so the council can see how we're improving efficiency.
Thank you. My last comment will be to the council in general, that in the past, I felt that when I was bringing an item on the agenda, one of the, one of the argument that I received was that we don't have money allocated for that specific matter in our actual budget. So in order to avoid this type of situation, I think it's prudent and appropriate for us to prioritize those items in a way that X amount of items will be addressed in the fiscal year of 2021. And we make sure that when we are actually adopting the budget for 2021, the specific item will be covered, either at least we have some budget dedicated for those items, either or not, we decide to move forward on that. But at least I would like the budget to take a look at it before we can vote on it.
Thank you. And that's what we're proposing for those nine items on the pending list that are really substantial, and we say addressed through the next budget process, that we remind the council of those pending requests and the council can decide to appropriate funding. One of the challenges about committing to just a flat number of, you know, following up on a flat number of council tasks is some of those council tasks are small and some of them are big. So for instance, one council task that we're going to follow up later this fiscal year is invite county animal services to make a presentation. Well, that's pretty straightforward and doesn't require much staff time as opposed to a much more significant new program that the council wants. So, but I do think we have to improve the dialogue, and I have some thoughts later before we wrap up today on modifying the intake process of our council requests for additional work so that we can, everybody has a better sense of what would be required to complete those. We'll be talking about that in just a moment.
Thank you, that concludes my question, thank you.
Thank you. And council member Murphy?
Sure, thank you so much once again, city manager Murray for putting this together and for your report. It certainly is very helpful to see all of the agenda items together, and I think it's very beneficial for us, so thank you so much. I just had a few questions. My first question, just for clarity, is regarding staff reports. It's my understanding that every agenda item does come with a staff report, is that correct?
No, not necessarily. City clerk Ayubu and city attorney cashier, feel free to jump in, but if something, say for instance, an agenda item is a presentation by an outside organization, so we had P Gini come in, I think we had East Bay Mud come in over the course of the past calendar year. If it's just a presentation, those things might not have a staff report. And so I think it kind of depends. Other agenda items, we don't have a staff report for the warrants list traditionally. I don't think we have a staff report for meeting minutes. So it does kind of depend. Eric and Heather, do you want to add with your expertise on that?
I would just add that a staff report is usually included, it adds value to an item, especially when council is considering an action. So the staff report has its standard sections to help council make their decision. It always includes the recommendation, you know, the background information, the fiscal impact. So I think on those types of items where councils taking action, you'll typically see a staff report. But as city manager Murray mentioned, there are several types of agenda items that might not necessarily need one. Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, I did want to ask that question because I noticed that the president, again, you gave it through a presentation, and I wanted to kind of link to the mentioning of the graph around capacity. And so like, it's all, it's all kind of like one big conversation, which is, which is pretty big. I wanted to ask that specifically because I do know that there have, in a previous council meeting, there was kind of a, I guess there was a council agenda item that was proposed around something that was already coming up, I think it was like the discussion of an economic development officer. But I do know that there's oftentimes, or at least I've seen even in previous councils, that there's oftentimes like a piece in, city manager Murray, I think you referenced this too, there's like a piece of an agenda item that really is kind of like a next step or like a, kind of like a, it's either a conversation that's already coming up and something someone may want to mention or bring up in a agenda item that is soon to come up. Again, like the economic development officer, and then, you know, what is an impeding agenda item that is like a whole conversation on economic development or how we see, you know, reorganization in our city administration? So I wanted to know if there were, you know, what is the proper process like that you all recommend in terms of having conversations that may not be action-based, but certainly are kind of like start of that conversation? So, you know, I'll use my own personal example in that with Indigenous land acknowledgement, while there is going to be hopefully future action taken by the council around it, you know, the first kind of meeting we had was very much of a discussion and kind of, you know, open-ended kind of conversation, if you will, public conversation around the action that is going to come up. And so when a council member had referenced in the past few meetings, I'm not too sure which one it was, that they wanted a, kind of like the discussion or the conversation to be pushed forward around economic development officer, that is something that city staff has already been working on, but I did find value in that conversation being, you know, especially as a policymaker, we are kind of, some of these things have to be talked about and given direction without action taken on them. So I'm wondering how, like, what is your recommendation on those type of agenda items and how we kind of move those, that process forward?
Yeah, so I think you, you put your finger right on the conundrum that, you know, I think we staff kind of recognize in looking in detail at this list of 61 items, because really, again, the formal mechanism is, you know, council has this item as a standing item on agendas to request future council agenda items, but really, council is authorized to request all sorts of follow-up from staff, it's not limited strictly to, and so I think one thing that, and one thing we'll be talking about in just a couple minutes, is I would like council's permission for staff to come back to council with a proposed modification to our procedures where council can really task staff with all sorts of different things. And I think right when we're having that conversation about council's request, we can get better clarity for staff, for the council, and for the public about what kind of follow-up council is hoping for, because some of them are kind of ambiguous. So for instance, there is a pending future agenda item that is consider recognizing United Against Hate Week when it comes up in 2021. Well, you know, it would be useful for me to know so that I can work with staff to get that completed, does council mean they want us to come back with a resolution or proclamation? Or are we just discussing that item, you know, is the item just discussion and then council directs us to do it? And so for some of those things, if council already knows that we want staff to come back with some legislation, you know, maybe that helps us cut down the steps in the process. So I think part of it is just having better dialogue. And one thing that we're proposing is we have some, you know, standard buckets that council gets to put its requests into so that we all have a clear understanding of what the next step is. Because in my experience in the time here and by looking at that long list, it's a real, it's a real variety of different types of follow-up from get back to me with a little bit of information, which is really simple, you know, what's happening with those streetlights up on Dwyer or something versus we want to implement this really significant new program? Well, those are two quite different. So I really want to, I would like to be able to propose to council some changes to the So I really want to, I would like to be able to propose to council some changes to the procedures so that everybody has a clear understanding of, you know, the types of requests. I also think that will help us prioritize them. So if we all understand the request and we know that some are, you know, are easier to address quickly, maybe we get to them sooner. As opposed to right now, it's kind of a really long, undifferentiated list we're working our way through. And, you know, it's going to take us a little while to complete.
Yeah. And I, and I would thank you for saying that, City Manager Murray. I think I was also I think to touch on your point too, I think I was also thinking about certain agenda items that I know, especially as a new council member, I've asked for to add simply because I'm getting feedback from the public on, on having a public conversation, you know, so I think you know, sometimes it's, I will be the first to say, sometimes it's things that I may not know and I don't expect staff to know either. And I also don't want the staff to really do work around it because I I would, I would want the public to really give us directions so that we can give direction to staff if that may, you know, the rotation of policymaking. And so I, you know, I guess I wanted to add a suggestion to, to say for, is it possible with this index that we have in front of us, attachment F, to, for all of the items that say scheduled for future council meeting? If we can have an expected date, even if that goalpost moved and you, and one had to communicate with us to say, I'm going to pick on myself because I think it's just easier to pick on myself. Right? Even if we, we said, you know, Indigenous land acknowledgement is scheduled for February and it's just here and we had to, you know, as a council, recollect ourselves and say, actually, we can't see this until June, right? Let's just use that for example. I think it's helpful for the public to always know what's coming up. And it's also, you know, very helpful for me as a city councilman to be able to tell the public, hey, our city manager, our staff is actually working on this. It's going to be coming up in this meeting. And again, in terms of, you know, the norm of no surprises, it allows us to, I'm going to speak again for myself. It allows me to be able to again, start conversations that need to happen in for the public, really, not in the public, but have conversations for the public with them to say, hey, this is coming up. What are your thoughts on that? And collect and basically be a part of that intake process you're talking about developing quicker, you know? And of course, if any dates were to move, that would also allow me to say, hey, we had to move this because X, Y, and Z. And I think that would just be valuable. And I think maybe a council member said it before, but I think for specifically the schedule for future council meeting, if we're saying that having an expected date present is valuable, again, even if that goalpost had to move and we had to communicate, just like any deadline to say, hey, you know, we actually have to move things around. I think it allows us to be a little bit more proactive about that kind of planning.
And I couldn't agree more. And as you noted, that sentiment was expressed by another council member at least, and certainly has been one expressed by the the public. You know, for lack of a better word, in my time here, my understanding of this list of pending items has been a little bit of a black box. And I don't think it has to be. I think just, you know, there is some sensitivity on staff's part because we don't entirely control our workdays. Things come up that are unexpected. And for a small staff without a lot of you know, cross training, a one unexpected instant can upset your whole week for sure. And so I think I want to do it. I absolutely agree both for the council members to be able to give something enough time to think about as well as get input from the community. You know, inform the community that they can come and participate in the meeting that we want to have greater advanced notice about things that are coming up. I know that's been a real missing spot so far that I really would like to see us improve. Things are still going to have to move sometimes because things come up. So we'll have to, I'll have to talk with the staff about what is, you know, get some of their ideas too, because I think they don't want to be, you know, have something on the agenda that they have to move in an emergency and you know, for lack of a better word, feel bad about. But I really do think having that, a long term, a public long term planner for upcoming agenda items would be really beneficial. So I'd be happy to to look at that. As I mentioned in a, we're bumping up against our timeline a little bit, but I want to take as much time as is needed for this. I do want to talk in the next couple of slides about some ideas for changing our procedures. And I've made a note of, you know, longer notice of upcoming items, which hadn't been, is not in our proposed list, but is something we can integrate into a proposed update to the council procedures. I think that would be great. You also noted another kind of follow up, which is kind of a workshop. So you know, that wasn't one of the ones on our list, but that's, that is a, it's like a listening session, basically. And that's a theme that other council members have raised too. So I think we might want to identify, you know, a type of council, staff follow up, which is a workshop, basically, a listening session.
I just had one more question, which is kind of a compound question and also a clarity question. For these agenda items, I know this is an index we're looking at. These are the ones that have been accumulated over, I'm guessing, two years at this point. I think the oldest date is 2018. Can you clarify, or the City Attorney Cacher, can you clarify, number one, how these agenda items were added as to this index? And also, you know, in the same regard to that question, can you clarify how agenda items could be, or what is the process for removing? If that were to occur, an item from this index as well?
Eric, do you want to?
Thank you, Councilmember Murphy. So my understanding is that each of the items that appear on the index that is included in Exhibit F were requested on the date that's identified. So starting back in December of 2018, requested by the council member who's referenced. So there was the portion of the agenda where there's a request for future agenda items. A council member was able to receive a majority vote on the council to have these items added to the agenda. That is the process that's set forth in the city council meeting procedures. In order for the city council to direct staff to take on an item like this or have it agendized for a future meeting, there needs to be a majority vote of the council members present, assuming there's a quorum, to have that item added to the agenda. And so that is, that is the process that we undergo. I'll just mention briefly, there's an inherent kind of challenge in that because the item for requesting future agenda items, it's really a vote on whether or not to add it to a future agenda. It's not a discussion of the item itself. So, and that's governed by the Brown Act. So we, we as a council, the council can't discuss the item beyond the issue of whether or not to include it on the agenda. So there's an inherent challenge in how much can be discussed. And I think that's part of the reason some of these issues have come up because it is hard to get direction when we're just deciding on whether or not to add it to the next agenda item. But hopefully some of the procedures that Andrew will be laying out in the future will, will get at some of these issues and we'll, we'll be working through that.
Thank you. And City Attorney Cacher, can you follow up with the second question? I know it was kind of a compound one, but how would one remove an agenda item from this index? Or if something were to occur in the future where someone added something, how would one, if, what is the process there?
Understood. So in City Manager Murray, please feel free to expand, but my understanding is that if something is completed, you know, so if something is added to a future agenda, so for example, the city manager mentioned that the fire study will be coming forward on a date certain in February. Once that item has been agendized, then, then it's removed from the list because it's no longer. Or, you know, if it's, yeah, usually that's it because it's usually kind of action is taken and it's been dealt with. If it continues to be a standing item, like there's follow up, it might remain on there until it's brought back. But that's usually how it gets removed.
I think, if I may add, City Attorney and Councilmember Murphy, the City Clerk, the City Attorney and I have talked, and I don't think there's a formal mechanism to remove an item unless it's complete or moot. But it does seem that there should be a mechanism for doing that. That's essentially just the opposite of, you know, the, the mechanism by which it gets added. So let's say the composition of the council changes, you know, whatever changes and the council wants to affirmatively make the decision to remove something. I don't think there's a mechanism. I think that's something that we can consider addressing into some revised procedures. Where, and as I mentioned, staff proposes to come back to the council on a quarterly basis to talk about what's still outstanding as an update. That seems like that might be a good time. We could include in that process a review. And if council thinks that some of the items are now moot, then council could remove those items. I think that would be a useful addition. City Clerk Ayubu, do you have any thoughts or observations on that?
I think I would just add that sometimes something that is an issue and a council member might raise, then subsequently becomes irrelevant. Maybe the issue that could be a community issue is no longer one. And I think in the past, we have had the city manager have sort of used their authority to, you know, understand that that was the case and take the item off the list and then update council. So that's one mechanism that's, that's been in place. Similarly, if something can be resolved quickly and is resolved quickly by staff, usually council receives an update of that item and that's presented at another council meeting and it would be taken off the list. So management of the list itself tends to be of a, you know, an administrative, excuse me. Dealing with a bit of a cough today, excuse me. You know, an administrative function. And so, you know, I think some, some edits to our list have taken place in that manner as well. So either an issue no longer being needed to come, to come back, or something that's been resolved quickly and by staff and then no longer needs to remain.
Great. Thank you so much.
From my perspective, I'd rather not be the person who makes the decision that it's been resolved. And frankly, I mean, I'd rather present that as part of a quarterly update and tell the city council what progress or work city staff has done on something and then get council's approval that it's been completed to the satisfaction. Cause this is an, getting added to the list is a formal council action. It feels appropriate to me that it be unadded, deleted through a formal council action too. So Christine Butterfield, who seemed so cheery and affable earlier in the day, is now prodding me to get on with the meeting, if we may. I have a couple more slides. They'll go quickly. But I think it's, yes, Dave, you're not wasting any time. Let me get right to the next slide. So we propose quarterly updates to the council on the status. This has been a bit of a black box. I think it would be to everybody's benefit if we had more regular public updates about it. The staff report gets into a little bit of, you know, detail on this issue of, you know, the mechanism by which the city council can collectively direct staff. I think that the future council agenda items, agenda items should be broadened to something like a council direction for staff follow up. So it can be a future agenda item. It can be something else. It can be a programmatic change. So I'm looking for council's approval that we proceed with these quarterly updates. And also that council gives staff the direction and authority to return with some proposed modifications to the council procedures to be able to do kind of better intake and reporting on the status of these special council requests. Does that sound okay to council? I think everybody will be happier and the expectations will be more clear and we'll all be on the same page, which will lead to, yes, good things. Is that acceptable to council?
Yes, please.
Okay, others?
Yes.
Got the official nod. Okay, great. Dave, does there one more slide? Okay. Oh, so I do want to circle back and mention this other thing. Yeah, you know, there are other great things we can do. The strategic plan strategies are really bedrock. Bricks and mortar, they're great and really significant things that every best practices model city should have in place. Those are going to be our areas of focus. We need to get those in place. There will be a little bit of time to work on some additional council special projects. But, you know, in the long run, to be sustainable and a model organization, we really do need some additional staff in some key areas. And we'll be hearing more about that from our consultant on the organizational assessment on Tuesday. And I think that's the last one. Or, Dave, there's one more. Yes, thank you for spending your time helping us work through this, this issue. We've already answered questions. And so, yeah, feel free, of course, to, if there's anything remaining that you feel left, was left undiscussed, let's add that as a future council agenda item. And Christine, we will be returning with some a request for input from council at a soon future council meeting when Christine provides us with the, some proposed revisions for the norms. Okay, thank you, Christine.
Great. Wow. What a meeting. I just made a list of everything that the council accomplished. So you had a thoughtful, in-depth discussion of norms. And what we've said is management partners will return to you reflect that in norms, procedures and process changes. You had a detailed discussion around roles, the practices of effective councils, a review of the city's highlights on the city's work plan. And then you took on this topic that the city manager facilitated with the city attorney and city clerk, and that's really enhancing the quality and flow of communications and these special projects. So anyway, my first reaction is woo-hoo, we did it. It's about 1:49. So what we like to do at the end of these sessions is just hear from each of you. You know, one takeaway. And I'm going to start with the city council. And then I'm going to bring in the city manager, the city attorney and the city clerk. And again, as I've mentioned periodically through the workshop today, management partners will prepare a report. We're going to summarize the discussion, summarize key takeaways, and we will include some recommendations and potentially some sample documents. And based upon the, I think one of the questions of, of one of the council members, we certainly can include the report from the June 2019 discussion as well. But I, you may already have a copy, but if you need more, we're happy to provide that to you. So with that, let's start with Councilmember Tave. What is one takeaway from today's discussion?
I think though, one takeaway I have is we definitely have a lot of work. And we definitely have a lot on our plate and, and one thing I can say is I'm glad that we can, we can all talk. I mean, and really just come to, to solutions and, and be in a place where we can tackle this list together. I mean, I, I feel like to me, I feel very comfortable saying, hey, I like this or I don't like that with this group and we, and I'm very proud of the, the ground we've covered so far. I mean, and I look forward to the new council members in covering more ground as well. I mean, I feel very comfortable with where we are and the work we have ahead of us.
Wonderful. Thank you. Let's see, Councilmember Toms?
I just, I think this has been a really good discussion. You know, I'm glad we're having it at the beginning of the terms and at the beginning of the year. It gives us an opportunity to see, you know, to lay the foundation of the work that we're going to do moving forward. This really, really makes me miss having an in-person discussion.
Yes. Makes me miss that too. Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Murphy?
Yeah, fantastic discussion. Very, very glad to be here and be in both community, but also governance with everyone. One key takeaway, I think I would say is just our council is very diverse. And I think probably one of the most diverse councils we've had in terms of so many different demographics, but region and every, I mean, just the perspectives that we have, I feel like we're truly, it's an honor to be able to work with a diverse council like this. And I'm, it makes me very optimistic about the future.
Nice, nice. Optimistic. We like to hear that, right? Mayor?
Coming together, whether it's in person or online, is helpful. Updates, getting us to common language, getting us to common understanding, getting us to a common direction. And review, reiteration of what's key for us cannot be overstated. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see, Councilmember Salimi?
Thank you. Very proud to work with the council. I think we set up the goals and we set up the line of communication and expectation. Now it's just a matter of implementing it and moving forward. And as Councilmember Murphy said, we have a very diverse council. And I think we can only do good things with it.
Nice, nice. Nice, nice. Okay, let's start with City Clerk.
Thank you. I think it was, you know, wonderful to hear all of the ideas shared by council. Despite such an incredibly challenging year, we continue to work towards making progress and working together. And so I thank you for that, and look forward to getting to work on improvements.
Super. City Attorney?
Yeah, just appreciate the really thoughtful discussion from the council and the direction provided to staff. This, it was great to see this. I really enjoyed the discussion of the council norms. I was around when those norms were created, and I think there were, you know, unique, it was a unique situation, and they were very specific to the times. And we have a new council, and we have kind of a new dynamic that exists, so I thought it was good to revisit that. If I can, humbly on behalf of staff, I know we all appreciate having some direction on how to move these future agenda items forward. So that's really great to have that level of direction, and so we have a plan in place to do that. But really appreciate the thoughtful discussion, and I thought you guys did a great job.
Thanks. City Manager?
Yeah, I echo the sentiments that, you know, I and the rest of the staff are really appreciative of a thoughtful, engaged, and diverse council that really, you know, all seem to have the community's and organization's best interests at heart. You know, we have some catch-up to do operationally, but we're on a good path. I'm really excited about getting us to a model organization, and then doing some even additionally innovative cool things. So I'm happy with where we've concluded today, and we're all looking forward to continuing to work for the remainder of fiscal year. I want to thank Christine and Ashley for helping us get through this. It was a lot we were trying to tackle, including the backlog of some issues. So thank you very much for that.
And before I provide just some final comments, Ashley, do you want to share one takeaway from your experience with this group today?
Yes, I can absolutely see that everyone is committed to furthering the goals of Pinole and to be great stewards for the public. And that's always encouraging from someone that has observed many councils, to see that you work so well with one another.
So before we wrap up today, I just want to humbly thank the city of Pinole, the elected officials, the staff, for allowing management partners to work with you over this two-year period. It's rare in government in general to have all the elements in place with so many individuals that are optimistic and hopeful and committed and dedicated. And I'll tell you, in all of the interactions I've had with the city staff and the city manager, they're probably, they're probably some of the hardest-working professionals that I've worked with as a consultant, and I just want you to be aware of that. And I want to acknowledge them for their work and commitment. And again, I know sitting in these workshops, that you put it on your calendar, you say, yeah, I guess I'll agree, and I'll participate. But I want to thank all of you for staying so engaged and having such an animated discussion. And thank you for making it easy for Ashley and I to prepare a high-quality report, because we collected a lot of great information, and we can turn it over to you, so you can operationalize it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so, meeting adjourned. Okay, thank everyone, echoing everyone's appreciation for the work done today, for coming together online, our staff, as well as the public who joined us. Stay safe, stay well, and I will adjourn the meeting to the regular city council meeting of February 2, 2021, in remembrance of Amber Schwartz. Thank you, everyone.